Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We're in a full house tonight. It is 6:30, and I will call our meeting to order. And I'll begin by reading the roll. John, myself, present. Susan?
Here.
Phil?
Present.
Neil?
Present.
Mike?
Yep.
Mark is not present tonight, and Matt?
Present.
Okay, and alternates. Zach is not present. Michael Bouchard?
Present.
Peter?
Present.
And Bradford?
Bradford.
Welcome, new members. Brad?
Yeah.
And Matt?
Thank you.
I guess last time would have been your first meeting, right? But we got snowed out.
We did, yes.
And also, welcome Avery, who is interning at Town Hall right now from the University, PSU, and working in the planning department there.
Welcome, Avery.
Welcome.
And before we move on, we are down one member this evening, so I will seat Michael Bouchard as an alternate.
Thank you, Chair.
As a voting member this evening. So, review of minutes is up next from our March 21st meeting. If anyone needs a coffee? All good?
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye. Abstain.
Okay. Three abstentions. All right. So, the minutes are approved of March 21st. Are there any communications, Joseph?
There were a number of communications, or communication received with regards to the Mountain Village Charter School Site Plan Compliance Hearing. So, I can go over, if we'd like, I can wait until we get to that hearing, but it, you know, we did receive a status update from the applicant on that project.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, in that case, up next, we have applications and public hearings. And so, first up, we have a continuation of a public hearing, yet in road development. And so, it's a continuation of a public hearing on a site plan review application from Hess Engineering on behalf of YTN TMH LLC to develop an approximately 6,000-square-foot building with first-floor commercial space and two residential units on the second floor, along with associated site and drainage improvements, as well as site improvements, to support a potential future Phase II. So, this is a little update where we were. So, our last meeting, right, we accepted this application as complete. We had asked for an engineering review of the drainage and runoff, and I believe we were asked to hold off on that for now because we have an amended applicant plan.
Yeah, that's correct. So, we received, we did send off that escrow agreement to set up the escrow account to fund the plan review with the applicant. We did receive word after sending that over from the applicant that they actually had some slight tweaks to the plan, so they asked not to enter into that escrow and not to have those plans reviewed because they wanted to discuss some tweaks to the plan with the board tonight, and then hoping that the board would be supportive of those, that they intended to ask for the review to happen prior to next meeting, as opposed to prior to this meeting, in, you know, of course, assuming that all of the, any of the modifications that may have taken place are acceptable and all look good to the board. So, it was the last update I have received on this one, and there is a bit of a memo in there that sort of just outlines that as well, but I'm not sure, I didn't catch-
Lots of seats up front, guys. Come on in.
Didn't catch if the applicant was here, but Will Hess was the representative-
Yes.
...on this project.
All right. And as a reminder to the board, so that, another continuance after this evening would put us pretty close to our 65 days, and hopefully, it would be resolved by that point, although if not, we could, at the request of the applicant, go further. Although, hopefully, we would not need to. Is the applicant here tonight? It's a very busy room to-
Online.
Or online, or? Well, let's take a couple of minutes to look through anyway, and-
Do we have the updated plan?
No, we didn't receive an updated plan at this point.
Oh, we didn't? This is still the, this is the old one?
This is the original one.
Okay.
So, I might suggest if the applicant, the board could postpone this until later in the meeting, in case the applicant needs more time to show up. Otherwise, the board could reopen the hearing and just discuss-
And continue it.
-and then continue it again until next meeting, though the, you know, as you mentioned, the next meeting is getting close to 65 days, but at mutual agreement between the board and the applicant, it is possible to go beyond that, but that would be, that would be the only consideration, is that continuing beyond next meeting would be.
Only one other possible consideration is, we haven't seen the amended plan, and if enough is amended, it could trigger, like, another application, or having to re-
Renote the butters?
Renote and, what's the word I was looking for? Re-accept if it's that different.
Correct.
At that point. But we'll cross that bridge when we get there. For now, I'll take that advice and put this off for a little bit, in case the status changes this evening.
Right.
Remind me if I forget somehow.
My only concern is that if we table it and we don't take it up again later, you know, we'll just have to make sure we put it on the agenda to remind ourselves to-
Yeah.
Continue.
All right. So, up next, then, we have a request for approval to modify a previously-approved subdivision infrastructure, Mountain View Farms. So, request from Byco LLC for approval, in accordance with Plymouth subdivision regulations, to modify the previously-approved infrastructure in Mountain View Farms subdivision by removing or not constructing sidewalk initially included in that development. The original approval includes sidewalks along one side of Crescent Street and Wildflower Lane within the development. And, looking around the room, oh, thank you. Would you like to come up and speak to the application? It's hard to find people in the room this evening.
I've got some handouts that probably would be helpful.
And just to clarify, I probably shouldn't say "application," the already-approved plan that we're looking at.
Sorry?
I called it an application by accident. It's not really an application, it's a already-approved plan that you're asking to amend.
So, this might be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, Joseph, you've done a good job of giving you the full set of plans, but it might be a good cheat sheet for you.
Sometimes concise is better.
Is this the sidewalks? Oh, thank you. We'll share. You guys want to share some of these, too? We'll share. We have two of the same. Okay.
These are your share area. Welcome?
Thank you. My name is Harry Blackie. I, along with my brother, who is here, Dale, we represent Byco. We're the owners of the Mountain View Farms subdivision, and we're back again. We're back again. A totally different issue. So, what's caused this issue of, and by the way, your agenda speaks exclusively to sidewalks. The request is for sidewalks and curb because the two work together, and if there's no sidewalks, there's no reason for any curb. So, the issue came up because we made application to the town to have them accept Crescent Street. And the town engineer has inspected the condition of the improvements, has determined that, that everything that's been done has been done in accordance with the plans and is satisfactory. He's done a punch list, if you will, of some minor items that he wants to have done, and we've agreed to do all of those. The issue that's come up has to do with sidewalks and the associated curb. So, the plan that was approved by the planning board called for sidewalks which were four feet wide, and we've actually installed some of those sidewalks, which are four feet wide. It's come to our attention, and Joe knows more, Joseph knows more about this than I do, but the Public Works, the person in charge of Public Works, has said, first of all, that the town, if the sidewalks are there and the town accepts the roads, and by the way, both the Public Works manager and the town manager have both told us that they want to take the road, they think that makes good sense. But the sidewalks are four feet wide, and apparently, the only piece of equipment you have for plowing sidewalks, which would be a requirement of the town if you take over the road, is a piece of equipment that will clear the snow from a five-foot-wide sidewalk. And so, you don't have a piece of equipment that can plow a four-foot-wide sidewalk. And even if you do, because the only sidewalks in town are downtown, we're told that the town doesn't have any way to get the equipment to the subdivision. So, the combination of those things has caused the town manager, and a combination of he and Joseph and the Public Works guy, to agree, and we understand that they won't accept the road unless the sidewalks are five feet wide, because the town doesn't have the equipment. And even though the approved subdivision plan calls for four-foot walks, and that's what we have installed on a portion of the subdivision, and the town engineer has agreed that those sidewalks have been, that have been installed, have been done so in accordance with the plans and the regulations. So, we've been talking amongst ourselves, and when I say ourselves, with Joseph and the person in charge of Public Works and with the town manager, and it sounds like, it feels like, the best solution for everybody is to eliminate the sidewalks and curb from the subdivision. So, that's what we're here proposing, is to have the planning board delete the requirement for sidewalks and curbs in the subdivision. And the handouts that I've given you, the purple line along, on that first plan I gave you, that's where the sidewalks are proposed to go. And the second plan that I gave you is a cross-section of the road, which shows the pavement and the curb and the sidewalk, which have highlighted in green and the pavement in yellow. So, that's what's called for, and that's what we've built. There's a number of reasons why the combination of all of us feel as though it's appropriate to delete the sidewalks. First of all, the sidewalks don't go anywhere. Not only don't they go anywhere, if you take a look at the plan of Crescent Street, you'll see that the required sidewalks don't even go through the whole subdivision, the whole length of Crescent Street. They're just on a portion of Crescent Street. So, there's no sidewalks on Fairgrounds Road. Crescent Street, at the end of the subdivision, up in the upper-right-hand corner of your plan, continues around and comes back out to Fairgrounds Road. There's no sidewalks there. There's no sidewalks on a portion, there's no required sidewalks on a portion of Crescent Street. As you can see, the road continues beyond the pink line. So, the sidewalks don't go anywhere. Wildflower Lane is a dead-end street, obviously not a lot of traffic, and there's no reason for, for a lot of traffic on Crescent Street either. There isn't. As far as we know, and we've, Joseph has been kind enough, he and Scott, to do a little research, as far as any of us know, there are no other subdivisions in town with sidewalks. This is the only one. We've, we sent a message, a communication out to all of the owners on Crescent Street, and Wildflower Lane, there are no homes there yet. So, to basically, everybody who lives there now, we sent a communication out to them, telling them what we were proposing and making sure that they understood, they were all served with a public notice before tonight of the hearing, but we wanted them to, we wanted to make sure that they understood what was being proposed. And we got a communication back. They have an informal group, the owners, do there, and the homeowner, who is kind of the leader, sent this communication to us. He said, "There are no sidewalks anywhere near my place. I have never understood why sidewalks were installed in the places they have been installed. It seems to serve no purpose." They look out of place. Given the circumstances listed in your note, I am, I'm in complete agreement." So, and he got back some, because he sent this message not only to us, but to all the other owners, and the only, and the responses that he got were all in agreement. So, we have a combination, as far as I know, we have complete agreement amongst the town, the people in the town who are responsible for this kind of activity, the town's engineer, the, and Joseph can speak for himself, I don't want to put words in his mouth. You know, it wouldn't necessarily be our first choice, but it's the only choice that I believe that we have that satisfies everybody's concern.
Thank you.
Questions?
I do have some questions and comments, and other board members do as well. I will also mention to the, everybody out there, if any of you have comments or questions, we will open a public hearing, just not immediately yet. So, for myself, if I could kick us off here, I certainly understand the frustration and don't really see an ideal resolution here. At the same time, I think one of the things that separates this subdivision from many of the others in town is that it is an open-space residential subdivision. And as such, we have in our regulations, which is probably, I would imagine, why the sidewalks might be there in the first place, assurances of access to the open space, and I would imagine those sidewalks, in part, kind of meet our OSRD regulations about access to that public space, so people who want access to that public space in that subdivision don't have to walk in the middle of the road to get there. And so, like, in the spirit and letter of the OSRD, I mean, I see why the sidewalks should be there. And I, as a member of this board, would hate to set the precedent that that access to the open space doesn't matter. And at the same time, I understand your frustration, and I, I'm trying to think of an ideal situation and solution here myself, which is not really up to this board to find, like, a solution in the end, it would be up to the select board, but as a planning board member, looking at the OSRD regulations, I kind of understand why they're there, those sidewalks.
I understand. Could, I'm sorry, because I have a comment about that, if it's helpful at this point, or if you'd like me to hold it. So, one of the interesting things is that the sidewalks do not lead to the access to the public open space. The, the access to the public open space is on a portion of Crescent Street where there are no sidewalks. So, the sidewalk, if you look at the plan that I gave you, up in the upper-right-hand corner, you'll see two lines parallel to each other running towards the upper corner. That's the access to the public space. The sidewalks aren't anywhere near that. So, I don't know that that makes a difference-
Okay.
-but clearly, if that was the reason for the sidewalks, it, that's not what they did.
I mean, in theory, this is one of the things that, like, why we would have sidewalks in the OSRD-
I get it.
-to provide that access.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand.
Any other, yeah?
You have existing sidewalks there. If, if this does go through, would you be removing those?
That's what we'd have to do.
Okay.
That's what we'd have to do.
I suspect the town would prefer that they not have to plow any, right?
Well, they're, effectively, what they're saying is that they can't. That they, that they have to, but they can't.
That is a tricky thing about New Hampshire and our state requirement that sidewalks be plowed.
And my understanding was that, and I'm not sure if you might hop on, maybe on Zoom or something like that, that the highway manager, Joe, was going to try and make it to share his opinion on it, which, you know, my understanding is, as, as the applicant has sort of summarized, the highway manager did, did state that it would be, that the town's equipment is not set up to plow four-foot sidewalks, it's set up to plow a five-foot sidewalk. You know, and notably, the decision of acceptance is vested in the, in the select board, so the planning board is really, you know, this specifically relates to approving a modification in infrastructure from what was originally approved, and sort of, that's the planning board's, the reason the planning board is coming into play here. The question of acceptance, ultimately, that is a question that the select board is tasked with, but yes, you know, as, you know, as stated, you know, I know that the highway manager has stated that, and I can't, I don't want to try and represent his stance without him here. I do believe that is his stance. Ultimately, the decisions on the infrastructure are, you know, on a subdivision that's under development, are sort of tasked to the planning board under the subdivision regulations. You know, when the planning board approves a subdivision, it looks at the infrastructure as well as the lot configuration, and so, modifications to that infrastructure. And I have the relevant passage of the subdivision regulations in the memo that I had sent to the board, but, you know, ultimately, if, in the boards, if the board determines that unforeseen circumstances make it necessary or preferable to substantially modify the location or design of any of the required improvements or installations, the board, after a public hearing with notice to a butters, may authorize such modifications. So, that's, that's where the board is being asked to weigh in here, is the board willing to modify as requested by the applicant, or, you know, ultimately, that's a decision that the board will have to make in light of, you know, all the, all the facts that are, that are pertinent.
In 2012, when it was approved, did the regulation state a sidewalk width?
So, the sidewalk width was, is not provided for in our subdivision regulations. They say the planning board may require sidewalks, but they don't have a standard spec that the sidewalks have to be built to. It's spelt out in this, you know, in the road standard section.
And I partially understand, this is, this is where the select board will come in, as well as Joe and others. I wonder about, I've seen those sidewalks, and I could certainly imagine, maybe it's not the ideal situation, but, I mean, you could run a five-foot plow down a four-foot sidewalk and get it cleared. On the other hand, we're obviously not the ones who can make that decision.
Well, I think you have to think about the expense it's going to cost every time you have to take equipment up there.
And-
If they're doing two or three times a week, because we have a heavy winter with snow, that's, that's a lot of transport, however, they're going to get it up there.
Or buying a piece of dedicated equipment to leave there.
Right.
What originally determined the sidewalk stopped on that crest going up on Crescent Street and didn't continue? Is that just our requirements?
Yeah, I can't answer that question. I just, you know, it's been a lot of years, and I, I have no idea why they stopped it there. I don't know.
So, remember, the, the planning board doesn't ever dictate design. We can accept proposals, but, or we can request certain things be done, but it's, without design review guidelines, it's kind of up to the applicant to propose what they think meets the intent, and then we can only apply, approve, or deny, or request that they modify, but we're not them. It was 12 years ago. It's hard to know what they were thinking.
I'd just like to say that the real need for a sidewalk is on Fairground Road, but that's not in our jurisdiction. But it's heavy pedestrian traffic on that road.
I would agree. Or, yeah. Or a bike lane. Lot of cyclists, too.
Well, let's not get too far down that rabbit hole.
I know. That's, that's not this project. I think, you know, my understanding is that the intent of this is to, is that, you know, future developments would all have sidewalks, and that, you know, we'd slowly build connectivity over time.
And if there was a fairground, a sidewalk on Fairgrounds, this would provide connectivity to it.
Yeah.
I mean, part of me, I understand the burden here of having to maintain this for the town, and at the same time, I understand why they were put in there in the first place, and with a real intent, and to follow the OSRD and just to provide walkability in a community, not on the road. And it's a tough one.
I, I have a question that-
Yeah?
-affects how I think about this, but is Crescent Street currently a through street?
Uh, well, it circles around and it, and it connects with-
Hits Fairgrounds in two, two places, and it's continuous?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
And, and that whole other portion, obviously, of Crescent Street, there are no sidewalks.
Right, right. But my, I guess my question is about potential for through traffic, you know, I'm thinking about, you know, what's the alternative if there are no sidewalks? I suspect that people will continue, I, I know people who live in that area who walk dogs, I don't know if they use, rely on the sidewalks, but, you know, with 30 lots, as best as I can tell, there are roughly 30 lots there, 30 potential home sites, there could be some traffic. You know, so, people walking pets in the morning might have, you know, my concern is about those people who might actually appreciate and rely on the sidewalks.
The only feedback that we have on that is the communications that I represent, there's two things. They all know that we're proposing to eliminate the sidewalks. There's nobody here tonight. And the reason for that is because they have already communicated to us how they feel about the sidewalks, that they, that they have no reason to have them there. And so, so that's the input that we have from them. And, and we haven't been plowing the sidewalks in the wintertime, so they haven't had the use of them in the winters, but my understanding is if the town accepts the road, they, they have to plow them.
And worth considering is that anyone there currently is not living in the density it's going to be once it's fully built out. And it's going to be significantly denser once it's all fully built out, which we're getting there at this point, but nobody's moved in yet.
That's, that's true, and I'm not trying to arm wrestle with you over that, but all of the units on Crescent Street are occupied. So, the units that are not occupied are on Wildflower Lane, and anybody going on to Wildflower Lane would have no reason to go on to Crescent Street, with the exception of the first 100 feet, because you come in off of, off of Fairgrounds Road, and you, and the road, the Wildflower Lane is 100 feet up. So, they're not going to, the, the homes that aren't there now are not going to add additional traffic to most of Crescent Street.
The town has a history of contracting snow plowing, and, and currently, the town does do some contracting of snow plowing to, you know, maintenance companies. So, that, that would solve that issue.
In fact, so, Neil, I mean, I know, obviously, you can't speak for the select board, but as our rep, as our rep here- board, but as our rep, as our rep here, do you have any other thoughts that might relate to that role, or?
I, I, I don't know. I, I think, you know, the sidewalks are really a good idea, because you, you're gonna have a fairly dense populated area, and, you know, there, there is gonna be quite a lot of traffic there.
Is it an over 55 community?
It is.
Less reason to have that demographic in the road. I'm an alternate tonight, so I'm just a Plymouth resident, but if I were voting this evening, I would vote negatively about removing these sidewalks, because in my opinion, it's a public safety issue, period. The town has to figure out how to plow it, period.
The, the problem with that is that the town has said, the selectmen have said through the town manager that they will not accept the road.
And that's something this board cannot figure out, but we can look after the public interest, which is what you're speaking to, in terms of whether or not we remove those Are there any further comments from the board before we open a public hearing and maybe hear some more voices?
I, I have just one.
Yeah?
More comment. Whatever is decided tonight, if there is an additional financial burden, that burden will be borne by the homeowners, and I'm pretty sure that that's one of the reasons that, that they feel the way they do about this.
Thank you. All right, so, it is currently 7:02, and I will open a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to this proposal, on Zoom as well, if you are on Zoom and want to speak to this proposal, you can unmute yourself and identify yourself. Yes?
Go ahead.
Well, I guess, yeah, go ahead.
See, as a resident, so I live on Crescent Street also, and as a resident, I go through there every day, and the residents that live on that street who walk up to their mailbox, walk their dogs, I see them on the street all the time. What sidewalks are there? I've never seen a single person on one of those sidewalks. And there's a constant, people coming out of their house, walking up to the mailboxes, walking their dogs, and they just don't use them.
And can you, so when you speak of the mailboxes, are, are we're making?
It's a community mailbox.
It's a community mailbox.
Yeah, it's a community mailbox, and it's up, actually, at the top of that plan, up near where it says sidewalk, at the top of the plan, and there's, yeah, up near there, there's a community mailbox that all of the residents mail goes to.
Okay.
And so they walk out of their houses and walk up to there, and they walk their dogs, and I gotta tell, I've never seen anybody use a sidewalk, ever.
Okay.
So, that's all I can say about that.
I did just.
They're just not used.
I just spoke to a resident who has a dog and walks, and she said she doesn't, she walks in the road because the sidewalks aren't continuous at this point.
I've never seen anybody on a sidewalk.
Right, well, I mean, there, there's an argument to be made that they're not, they're not there to be used at this point either, right?
Uh, they're...
In some places?
Yeah.
In some places.
They start at the top here and come down. It's probably five, five blocks.
And, and I suspect that this, this person was there long before development and was probably used to walking in the road, she's fine with that, but.
They just don't use them.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any further public comments?
No. Not mine. We do have a few participants on Zoom, but nobody's unmuted themselves.
Okay, so, well, I guess it is currently 7:05, and I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning board. Mike?
I'd like to ask Harry, what's the speed limit on that road?
Actually, there are no speed limit signs.
On the other part of Crescent Street, it's 15, 15.
I'm sure that's what it might be. There's a couple of things that are on the county engineer's list of things that need to be done, and signs is one of them.
And, and when we do speak, please come up to the podium so we can get.
Sorry.
Especially for, for the recording and everything, it just makes it easier.
So kind of follow up, is there any, if we do decide to let the sidewalks go, is there any potential that a 10 or 15 mile an hour speed limit through that road?
Could be, that road will become a town road, and they can post the speed limit at any, at any speed they want to.
One thing to just mention to the board, my uncle lived on, let's see, the development across from Fox Park.
Prince Haven?
Prince Haven, and when you'd see, there was no sidewalks, everybody walked on the road. It was nice and wide, it was safe, and the speed limit was, was, I believe, 10 or 15 with speed bumps, so everybody went really slow. So, maybe even speed bumps if the town decides. But it sounds, one other comment, it sounds like even if the sidewalks were five feet wide to begin with, the town still may not want to take it over, because they don't want to transfer equipment.
That's what they've told us.
Okay.
That's what they've told us.
All right. That's all I got.
And if the sidewalk, the other, and I'm sorry, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to, to speak a little bit more to that question, but the other problem with five-foot sidewalks, the reason for the curb is that the curb between the sidewalk and the curb, there's a three-foot grass strip. So, if, if you, that, if that, if you went to five-foot sidewalks and that grass strip went down to two feet, so what happens in that grass strip is, in the summertime, when you got the heat in the pavement, and you got it on both sides, and if it were five-foot walks, it would be two feet wide, you would never be able to grow grass there, because the heat from, from that curb, I mean, that black curb and that black sidewalk, the, the roots of that grass would be so, it would just burn up, and, you know, I, I think we've all seen places where that's the case. It's, it's a minor issue, but it's, it's reality.
So, if this doesn't pass, and they are made to grow with five-foot sidewalks, it ends?
Well, no, they wouldn't be made to do five-foot, they just would have to continue to do four-foot everywhere, and then the town would still be obligated to plow the sidewalks, which they don't have equipment for.
Oh, I mean, really?
They won't take.
I would presume.
Tonight, we can't tell them to do five-foot sidewalks.
No.
As a condition of acceptance, the select board might want to do that. That's not really up to us.
But that would be a change to the plan.
It would.
Which would come back to us anyway.
My understanding is that the town won't accept the road unless the sidewalk is five feet. Is that correct?
And Joseph, you correct me if I'm wrong, the comments that I've heard is, even if you make them five feet wide, they don't want to accept them.
Right.
Yeah, I, you know, I can't speak on behalf of Joe, he's not here. My understanding was that that was, you know, that trailering or, or driving the tractor was one consideration, the major one being the width, but there is also the, is a consideration of how to get them there, and that's, you know, something that I think he's mentioned, but I, you know, he also, my understanding is that the, the most pressing concern he expressed, and that, you know, again, I, I don't really want to put words in his mouth, you know, is that, you know, the equipment can't do a four-foot sidewalk in his, you know, in his opinion.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, if all of this stays, the town takes it, there's still no sidewalk from where that ends to, back to Fairgrounds Road on one section of Crescent Street. So, I mean, I know that's not a decision of us, but it's something to think about that still not really gonna give you more sidewalks, you know?
Are the sidewalks pretty much terminated at the mailboxes? Like, do the, do the, does the sidewalk make it to the mailboxes currently?
On the other side of the street.
On the, but, yep, on the other side of the street, but it gets to that point up there.
Well, it, it depends on which direction you're coming from.
Sure, coming in from the farthest entrance.
Yes.
Yep.
This is interesting.
Yeah, they're, they're not all, the sidewalk is, all of that sidewalk isn't constructed. As of now, about half of that sidewalk is constructed.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I don't think it matters.
No, but, I'm, I'm just thinking that, that they just plowed a sidewalk, or they just laid asphalt on the sidewalk on Broadway last summer, and I'm pretty sure that's not any wider than four feet, and they plow it.
Is that the, uh, I, because I saw, I...
Town, town, yeah, they just replaced the sidewalk on Broadway last year.
And, and I don't know that it was Broadway, but I went and looked at a sidewalk today that was, that has just been installed. Would that be the only one that, is it up behind the hospital?
Yeah, off Highland, and it goes up towards Pleasant.
I think it's five feet.
It looked pretty narrow to me, but I never really measure a sidewalk when I'm walking around.
Yeah, I looked at it today.
Which is somewhat relevant, but like, a little bit off of whether or not, not this particular development should have sidewalks, either because of safety, being a 55-plus development, being an OSRD, and even though it doesn't quite get to the open space, which probably by design it should have, but I can't change that at this point.
Honestly, I'd like to have more time to think about this. Can we continue this to our next meeting?
I, I mean, we can. I don't know how everyone feels about this. Mike?
My only thought is, if that right-of-way for a sidewalk were to maintain on a map, that if the town ever did get a piece of equipment that could do it, and the town wanted to build the sidewalk, the town could decide to do it. They build sidewalks or maintain sidewalks on a regular basis, they, at least it's, they have the option, it's there for eternity, to do it if they want to down the road. So that kind of gives us that option. It's unfortunate that it would be the town's dollar and not the developer who had planned to do it.
I think that whether the town owns a piece of equipment specifically for this, this development is irrelevant, because the town has a history of contracting, and there are multiple contractors in the area that are capable of contracting and doing the job.
Yeah, the, 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 the problem with that, and I under, I understand that, and I appreciate it, the problem is there's nobody in this room who controls the selectment, and...
Maybe, maybe we should consult with a select board.
There you go.
Everybody in this room controls the selectment.
Oh, okay.
We're all voters.
That's true. Good point.
Many of us. You can't necessarily assume I'm everyone, sure. So you'd like some more time?
Yeah, so, I would like to...
What, what will we learn with the, with extra time? Like, what are we going to be looking into?
So I'm, I'm going to move that we continue and request written statements on the request from the highway department, the selectmen.
I second that motion.
Any, we have a motion and a second to continue this upon hearing further, to hear further comments from highway department and selectmen, and I guess anyone else wants to weigh in?
Probably the town manager as well.
Yeah. In writing?
Yeah, just a written statement on pros and cons.
Okay.
The select board makes policy.
And would this be to the next business meeting of the board?
I would assume so, yeah.
Which is May 16th?
Yeah.
Okay.
When is it, May 16th?
Also, is there any further discussion about that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so we will continue to May 16th, I wish, right?
That, that should be the next business meeting.
Okay, on the May 16th, and discuss this further. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank, thank you.
This is a very good question, and I'm glad you brought it to us.
And it's complicated.
I'd like sometime to get some more.
I think your presentation was excellent.
I agree. Thank you.
There are any good answers, however.
It's not an easy one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Keep my stuff in order here. All right, so, next on the agenda, I will, I will announce, and we have a compliance hearing for Mountain Village Charter School site plan, and compliance hearing to review conformity with conditions of approval placed on a conditionally approved site plan application for Mountain Village Charter School to construct an educational facility, including three classroom buildings and associated site improvements on parcel 213031, Tenny Mountain Highway. So we've been informed that Mountain Village does not have an update for us at this point. But we do have a scheduled public hearing, so just in case anybody wants to speak to this, I will open a public hearing. Before we do that, so presumably, obviously, we're not gonna make a decision tonight, you know, someone could make a motion, I suppose, but I, I would presume we're not gonna make a decision tonight. Have we heard from them when we might continue this to again?
Yes, I, I did receive a question or a comment from them. So, would you like me to just share the full update that they provided? So, the, apologies, I was not able to get this one printed, we're actually out of paper downstairs, if you can believe it. We would like to request to continue the compliance hearing for MVCS. We do not have updated plans to meet the conditions set out in the January planning board meeting. We are seeking bank financing before expending additional funds to update the plans, and our funding is conditional on securing a contractor and full project budget, which has been a challenge in the current market. Please advise as to timeline, and otherwise, we will send updates on financing plan as they become available. So then I asked if they had a particular time at which they wanted that request to be, and they got back that they would like to request another three months, and they will provide an update if they have a breakthrough. So that would be?
July?
July, which the meeting in July is, is, is the 18th.
July 18th, okay.
Their original plan was accepted?
It was approved, yeah, with these conditions.
Including the compliance hearing, yeah. All right, so, again, we have a hearing scheduled, so it is currently 7:18, and I will open a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to the Mountain Village application? And if you're on Zoom and would like to speak, unmute yourself. All right?
Make a motion that we continue it to our July meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to continue to our July 18th meeting. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, so we are, continue to July 18th. All right. So, up next, we have two applications related to the same piece of land in Plymouth, a subdivision application and a site plan application, and we'll do our best to keep these separate applications. We'll deal subdivision first, and then consider this site plan application second. Just a little bit of background for those in the room who might not be fully familiar, in this process, we get the application, we look at it to see that it has all the pieces of an application that we need, and we'll accept it as complete if so, and at that point, we move on to talking about approval and further discussion of how it meets our zoning and site plan regulations, and we'll have a public hearing, and at that point, either continue, deny, hopefully not, or conditional approval. All right, so, we have a minor subdivision application at 12 Smith Bridge Road, application from La France Hospitality for a minor subdivision of 12041, owned by TNT Mountain Investments, and located at 12 Smith Bridge Road. The proposal is to divide a 40.6 acre parcel into two parcels. into two parcels of approximately 4.4 and 36.1 acres. And the applicant, or applicants, would like to identify themselves, and I guess continue setting up and speak to the application.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have the sheet? Do you have the sheet? Did you pick this up here? Is this your staff list?
Thank you for your patience. Almost there. All right, good evening, board. Thank you very much for having us tonight. My name's David Sherborne. I am architect at Opeche Construction, was here, I think, in January of 2023 last year on a sort of conceptual meeting, sharing with the board the concept for the Home to Suites Hotel. So it's great to be back now that we've got a site and a formal application for the subdivision and the site plan application. If you go to page number two on the handout, I'll just introduce our project team. We've got a few people here. We've got, from La France Hospitality, the applicant and developer, we've got Tim Burkhard on the right, and Sean McCrann in the back, from Opeche Construction, myself, David Sherborne. We've got in the middle Andrew Pike, president, and Barry Stowe, our civil design manager. On my left, we've got Brian Jones, the civil engineer, and I believe online is Jeffrey Durk, our transportation engineer. So as discussed, I'll just give a brief rundown on the subdivision application. If you turn to page three on the handout board, just a quick run through, and I think it's supported by the staff report, there's an existing 40.55 acre parcel that we're looking to subdivide into a smaller 4.43 parcel, acre parcel on the western side to, that the hotel's been proposed to be built on, and that would leave 36.12 acre parcel. The current lot is in the agricultural zoning district. Both remaining parcels, once subdivided, will meet the minimum lot size and will meet the minimum road frontage. There is a common access easement for shared driveway, which I think if you look on the next page, page number four, you can see we've color-coded, on the, on the western side is sort of an orange highlight showing the hotel parcel, on the left side in yellow is the, is the remaining lot, and then you can kind of see an orange or red shaded area, which is on this plan as well, which is sort of the shared common easement, which will act as the driveway to the hotel site and the future development. I did want to point out that the intent of that is just for driveway access. There is no intended use for, to use that as road frontage for a future subdivision. So that's a quick run-through on the application and where we're complying. I think I'll leave it at that for now, and turn it over to the board for any questions, and we can answer any other technical questions that you have on the subdivision portion.
All right, thank you.
What did you say? There was no intent of a future driveway, is-
No, so there was a clarification in the staff report if there was going to be any intent to make that a road and use it to allow for future frontage and future subdivisions, but that's not the intent. It's purely a driveway to serve.
Of that road indicated in red.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Looking through my papers. Here we are.
You said that, right?
It's subdivision.
Keep the board focused on that.
Yep. And it's my understanding that you plan to get town water and sewer?
Correct.
Okay. And do you have a permit for that at this point, or?
Not as yet.
Actually, and at this point, just to remind the board, we should be figuring out if the application is complete.
Make a motion that we accept the application as complete.
What are the requirements for the environmentally sensitive zone?
Yep, environmentally sensitive zone, and this, these properties are subject, it's a 500-foot zone extending from the edge of the river, and the minimum requirements that come with that are a minimum waterfront frontage of 150 feet per lot, a 75-foot setback from the river, and no excavation other than what is incidental to lawful construction are kind of the, the broad restrictions imposed by that environmentally sensitive zone. There are also restrictions on like gravel operations and things like that, but particularly for subdivision, they, they have that 75-foot setback from the edge of the water and that waterfront frontage requirement are the, are the extra ones.
Top of bank. So I'm just looking through the checklist of required items and, like topographic features and all of that. Is that all on the subdivision plot?
For the record, again, Brian Jones with Allen and Major Associates, we prepared the, the drawings with land surveyors and civil engineers, and I think as the staff memo pointed out, everything on the subdivision checklist is provided, although not on this drawing. It's within the plan set, and based on the planed recommendation, I would request some waivers specifically for the subdivision sheet, only because once all those items are added to it, it becomes very difficult to record at the registry, topography, soils, utilities, that generally is not allowed at the registry. All those checklist items are provided in this submission package, although I understand you're bifurcating the process. All, all of the information has been provided. So we do intend to request waivers specifically for the checklist items for the subdivision sheet, but not for the entire set.
Okay. So from the board's perspective, so we don't have requests for waivers in writing, and you do provide that information in another place, in a separate but related application, and we have to decide whether or not we are going to accept this as complete, and then what we want to do in terms of if we get to acceptance or approval, I should say, having conditions or just waiving it totally, or, yeah, okay, thank you. Anybody have any thoughts here? I think Mike still has a motion hanging. Not in a second.
Noted.
You're going to have to bring the property up to the 100-year floodplain?
Sure, I'm sure we'll get into that, if I may, through the chair.
Go ahead.
I'm su, we'll probably get into that with the site plan review, but yes, we would be adjusting the grades on the property where the future building would go.
You're a non-voting member this evening. Do you have any read on this? Your, your pretty quick read on-
Yeah, the chairman just asked me, so I'll speak up loud so everybody can hear me. What I just said to the fellow board member to the left is, this first application is a no-brainer. It's the second one that'll be much more involved.
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely.
This is a, so, my opinion is, this one has a frontage, it has the area, it has many other challenges, but geographically or geometrically, it complies.
I agree.
That's all that the application is about.
And all we're doing is just saying that the application is complete, and then we will look at whether we approve or not after.
I'll second Mike's motion.
Okay. Sorry, motion and a second. Are there any, is there any further discussion? I'll just reiterate, I mean, I, I, we can decide how much it matters for approval or acceptance as complete for that matter. So there are some things that are not on here that are in the other application, as we were just talking about, and so, I mean, in a sense, technically, it might not be complete. On the other hand, we do have the ability as a board to waive our subdivision, parts of our subdivision regulations. And so I'll just put that out there. Any further discussion? Are we ready for a vote? Okay. So all in favor of accepting this application as complete, as moved?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so we're accepted as complete, and now we have to move on to approval, and if we do get to approval here, we have to also do some findings of fact, and luckily, our applicant has outlined some of them for us. If you go to the previous page, this is, this is some of the more important ones. And I, I will say, before we get into finding the fact, we also should open a public hearing as well.
Hey, Matt, can you send me, can you reach that set of plans, the subdivision set right there?
This one?
One, one further forward, 11 by 17.
Sorry.
That one, that one, yeah. No, sorry.
And yes, they're in the full Home to Suites packet, the subdivision plan is page number, apologies, just give me a second here, but it is in your packet too. It's one of the first pages of the full site plan packet, so the large format plans and 11 by 17s you have do include the subdivision plan as one of the earlier pages.
So I'm going to just give my two cents here and say that I imagine we can probably approve this, and we have to do a public hearing, findings of fact. We, I think, will need to talk about conditions of approval, and if we do want anything added to this plan, and also if there's anything else necessary at this point in terms of permitting that goes along with this plan as opposed to the site plan.
And in the packet, so the full Home to Suites plan set that you have, that was provided upfront, it's page V105, and that's of the applicant packet that was provided originally. That's the, that's the officially provided subdivision plan, and that's the one that would be in the same packet, but the one under consideration. Just a note of the subdivision regulations, they do call for waivers to be requested in writing, so that's just a note as the board considers approval going forward.
And it's good practice, and we have the ability to also waive the waivers, if we so choose. Do we have any thoughts here before we open a public hearing, or we want to talk about right away? Should we, can we raise the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So it is currently 7:36, and I will open a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak to this subdivision plan, not the site plan, meaning just the division of this piece of land, please come up to the podium and identify yourself and speak. Anyone?
Hello, I'm Danielle Sargent, a butter at 30 Smith Bridge Road, and I, I have more I want to say when we get to the second application, but I'll just say now that I oppose, I oppose the subdivision. I feel like when you look at the two pieces together, the subdivision is designed to cut it off from access from Tenny Mountain Highway and forces, you know, the containment of the, onto traffic onto Smith Bridge Road. So that's all I'll say at this time, is I oppose the application.
Thank you. Are there any further comments? Yes, please come up.
Hey, my name's Dave Cody. I'm also a butter, and I've read most of what's been, most of what's been in all these applications, and I have to oppose it as well, mostly for the same, the biggest reasons being the same reasons, and it's the, the traffic flow, and it's not just the traffic flow, it's not just the traffic flow onto and from Tenny Mountain Highway, which is horrible at best. It's also the traffic flow that goes down Fairgrounds Road, because people, people are going to turn right out of there and go down Fairgrounds Road instead of using Tenny Mountain Highway because of that reason. So a lot more issues later on, but for those reasons especially, oppose this.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? If you're on Zoom and would like to speak, just unmute yourself and identify yourself. Okay. All right. So it's currently 7:38, and I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board, and we can start talking about findings of fact to see if this fits our regulations, and move to the next. We don't have to get right into findings of fact as well. We can always ask further questions, of course. I will make a finding of fact that both of the proposed lots meet the minimum lot size requirement in the ag zone.
Adding to that, since, since your finding of fact was about area, I will say they also meet the minimum frontage requirements for the ag zone. And the only thing I'd like to clarify is that the proposal being shown with public, you know, in light of public sewer being available, public sewer is not currently available at this, at the site, but I believe they meet the requirements with or without public sewer.
Although having that access and not having the indications for the well-inseptic- Although having that access and not having the indications for the well and septic could be a condition, since they don't provide the well and septic.
Right.
Which you're presumably not gonna use.
It is a note, you know, as, and I do mention this to the staff before, but it is, it is worth noting, to your point, that lots under five acres that are not served by water and sewer require NHGES subdivision septic approval.
True.
So if it's not served by water and sewer, it would, it would require that approval.
Yeah, that's a good point. Is, do any of the plans show 4,000 square foot area?
No, they do not.
Not currently, okay.
So in that case, we just have a condition of approval that they
Seek state subdivision approval.
Or provide water and sewer access.
Either one.
Yeah.
Any second?
Well, that wasn't a motion yet, was it?
I don't think you made a motion.
No.
Unless I missed it.
Oh, it was a discussion at best.
Are there any further findings of fact? I, I would note that this doesn't have, as we talked about earlier, as a finding of fact, some of our required items from our subdivision regulations, and and I could potentially defer to Joseph here in terms of, a comment was made about putting too much on a, on a plat, and
Too much on a what?
On the plan here, and did you have any guidance on this, in terms of what we normally accept and approve?
Yeah, I mean, the boards, the checklist is usually, you know, sometimes the board grants waivers of checklist items in certain cases. It's not uncommon, items like the contours and things like that are often shown on the plans. We do have, you know, we do have some checklist items that aren't, aren't shown on here. Ultimately, it is the discretion or the decision of the board to grant waivers, so waivers, you know, should be, should be requested in writing, but it depends in some ways on what information the board needs. I don't, you know, I don't have any doubt that those items don't need to be included on a recorded plat, but they are part of the subdivision regulations of the town.
That's the information I was fishing for. Like, is there anything here that's actually missing in terms of legal obligations for their recorded plat? And we have the stamps, and we have all the boundaries and all that general information, and so we have all the legally necessary information.
Except for, I would, I would say that one item that's not shown on here that is worth maybe some additional discussion is that there are a couple of abutters that aren't labeled, which probably should be included on the plat, even if the, you know.
Were they notified?
They were notified, but they were not shown on this plat.
The, the lack of state subdivision approval concerns me, because while the applicant has every intention of putting a hotel and you know, serving the facility with water and sewer, that may not happen, and, you know, create a lot smaller than five acres that, for some reason, gets used for something else in the future, and doesn't have adequate area for, to meet septic loading, that could be a problem for future owners. So, keeping in mind that the subdivision of land is independent of the proposed use we're looking at now.
Well, if we have a condition, like precedent on this, that they get water and sewer to the property.
Or provide state subdivision approval.
Yeah, either one. Should, should take care of that, I suppose. So we should still be, if there are any more findings of fact, I'm not sure. We should also be thinking potential conditions, like labeling of butters perhaps, the water sewer versus state approval, driveway permitting, and easement, I suppose, we were, we would be getting eventually for this, for the shared driveway.
It looks like the engineer wanted to address
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to explore the water and sewer a little further, so obviously, we've reached out to Plymouth Village Water and Sewer District multiple times and discussed it, and worked out the plan to connect and provide those two utilities. We don't have the permits yet, but if there was a condition before the, the plat is recorded that we have those connection permits, I mean, certainly amenable to that.
I think that would alleviate the need for subdivision approval, would it not?
Yeah, I think so.
We, we can also do state subdivision, but we're gonna connect to water and sewer, or there is no project.
Right, and I, I support you, I've just, other, other projects have come before us and not moved forward, and, you know, a subdivision should be treated separately than your hotel proposal.
Right, so we would commit to having water and sewer connection permits prior to having the plat endorsed and recorded.
That's my only concern.
Yeah, I saw that.
Didn't speak during public hearing, sorry.
No, I, I caught that. Mike? Are you pointing?
I can wait, I can wait, but I do want to make a comment, but
Go ahead, Mike.
So, without having an informational session where you'd come and let us know what you're thinking you'd like to do with the property, and then
Consultation.
Huh?
Conceptual consultation?
Yeah, or you come in advance of doing an application formally. You could get a chance to talk to people that live in the town and know about some of the pitfalls that you might be running into. You can know about that in advance, because what I'm afraid of, and I'm not afraid, but I'm just thinking on your behalf, should you get the subdivision, and then nothing goes forward because of roads, and maybe it's five years premature because they're not gonna take care of the intersection, they say for five years, which could turn into 10 years. We've seen, we've been repeatedly told that for the last five or six years, almost 10 years now. So, I don't know whether that would play, to almost get information here, session, on the next part, whether that may change your plan to get approval for the subdivision, because then you have this small lot that doesn't really work for the development after, and whether you may not want.
And, I mean, ultimately, we have to treat these separately?
Right, and we're gonna, you're here, you're, we're going to approve, and I don't want you to have to reinvent the wheel later.
I think the position of the team would be to get subdivision approval regardless, and if something happens, then we wouldn't record it.
So we didn't get site plan approval, for example?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough. Was there a member of the public, I mean, I know we're not in public hearing anymore, but would you like to? We can make, we can make an exception if you'd like to come up and
My name, my name is Richard Deon. My property is directly across the street, based on their map, wherever their driveway is. I have a frontage on Tenny Mountain as well as on Smithbridge Road.
Welcome back to the planning board. Two years ago.
Yeah. The question I have, I was gonna bring this up later, is where is this water and sewer line going to run? Is it along Smithbridge Road, which makes the bend? That's my concern. And secondly, I know I put in water and sewer hooked up to the town, and we had to bore underneath Tenny Mountain Highway, which was an interesting project, not to mention costly. And I'm just wondering if you guys have had that conversation as yet.
Thank you, I was the chair. So, yes, we have had those conversations. The water, since we are talking about subdivision, that does require water. The water line has been stubbed across Tenny Mountain Highway. It does stop at the end of Smithbridge Road, there's a hydrant there, that's where the 12-inch line stops. What we've presented to Plymouth Village Water and Sewer District is to extend that water line past the future driveway and stub it, and obviously bring it into our site, but then if future improvements wanted to be made, it's past our driveway. Sewer, as the, a butter correctly says, is on the opposite side of Tenny Mountain Highway, and does require a horizontal bore to get under the highway. That is shown on the site plan, where we intend to start that and finish it. And we have reached out to DOT already, there's in fact a highway access permit that is currently being reviewed, and that would be part of it, so. Water and sewer is in the works. I said we don't have permit applications, but we've certainly done our due diligence so that those two utilities are available for us.
All right, thank you. Sue?
I have, the traffic issue is, I think, a big one. Tenny, Fairgrounds Road cannot afford a whole lot more traffic. That road is, I know it's not, it's a state road, I believe, but there's a lot of residential areas out there, it, it, just the road itself, it just can't take that kind of a hit. And like it was explained before, people will realize that's the easy way to get out, because you can't get out on Tenny Mountain Highway easily. There's a lot of accidents there. I know there's like a five-year plan, or whatever it is, that's supposed to be going in there. I don't know if there could be something noted that more information needs to be given about that. I, I just have concerns about the additional traffic and no sidewalks. There's a lot of people that walk out there, so there's that sidewalk issue again. So now we're gonna add more traffic to that with no sidewalks. I just think that's a huge consideration.
There is a driveway permit, which will probably trigger some of this, and talking about the hotel and the site plan will also trigger more of this, and so we will, we would presumably have a condition on the driveway permit, which could trigger some of this, and we have a, I think it's part of the site plan, a full traffic study, and we could ask for that to be reviewed, probably as part of the next part of this process, although obviously it impacts the driveway permit and stuff like that.
We issue the driveway permit, we don't do it, because it's a state road, so it's not our deal.
So, and, but it will be, this will all be an issue when they, when they apply for it.
I just had to say it.
No, and I, I expect we're gonna have an even longer discussion of those issues when we get to the site plan. So, how do we feel right now?
May I ask the applicant a question?
You may.
Did the applicant consider making this lot at least five acres in size? Which by my rough math is maybe 18 feet wider, thereabouts. That's something we can review and consider. I mean, the geometry of the lot is based on the location of the, the common driveway. And then, keep the math simple, it's a straight line. We could gerrymander the line to make it five acres, if that was important to the board. Again, we're open to a condition of the final plat that we have water and sewer permits.
And, and I guess that speaks back to Phil's concern as well, right? About, you can have the permits, but if you don't bring them there, there's still no water and sewer there on the subdivision, if it doesn't go through.
That's right.
And
Well, it's not time to talk about it, but I'd be real curious what the site distance is at that driveway. We have that shown on the site plan when the time comes. That's right. So moving it could be problematic. You could flare it, yeah? We should be on there.
So, I'm just curious if we're ready for a conditional approval or not, and if so, we'd have to figure out what those conditions would be, including in terms of if you actually do want state subdivision.
So, I am concerned about state subdivision approval. And, so, state, just for discussion's sake, state subdivision approval, primarily concerned with septic design
Lot loading capacity.
Lot loading capacity, and the sewer is the harder, harder utility to get to this site. It'd probably be pretty easy to get water there, but that's not gonna address the, the, the state subdivision approval requirements, and I'm not, I'm not a septic designer, but I, my understanding is when you're close to water and, and, you know, you deal with a high water table, it's harder to find adequate loading.
Certainly, there are challenges, but if there's no sewer, there's no project. We wouldn't record a subdivision. Right, so everything
Can we make that into a condition somehow?
Yes.
That's the question, and I think the answer is yes. We just have to think about what the words are there.
I, I would move that we offer conditional approval, one condition being receipt of all necessary state and federal permits, including state subdivision approval, if necessary.
And
If necessary, meaning if you don't get the other
Meaning if, if sewer is not brought to
Yes.
Without, so state subdivision is required unless sewer is there, so I'm gonna say that state subdivision is required unless sewer lines are brought to the parcel.
So that would be one condition. How about labeling of butters, or?
Uh, yep, the
So you just have the permits and, and easement being recorded?
That there be, yeah, language provided to record the easement for access, and that missing of butters be noted on the plan for recording. So, three conditions of approval, does that sound right?
I might try to modify Phil's with state, with water and sewer being brought to the site, either or getting a septic design approval, because he may keep it and just put a house on there, or something else, and he could still have his lot.
That's what state subdivision approval is.
Not necessarily getting water and sewer there, but a state onsite approval.
I think, I think you're on the same page.
Okay.
State subdivision approval is just showing that there's a 4,000 square foot area that can meet loading on a five acre, on a parcel smaller than five acres.
Would we need that if he's bringing in?
You're saying you get that if the other fails?
If sewer is there, it's not needed.
Then I'm, I'm fine with that.
So we have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the conditional, you have a conditional approval for the subdivision, congratulations. And, don't go anywhere, right? Because Now, the fun part, yeah, site plan. So if you'd like to come back up and
Present?
Say a few words about that. Actually, I should introduce, I haven't even introduced the site, the site plan yet. So we have a application for a site plan review. So, we have a application for a site plan review, 12 Smith Bridge Road, the same, these are land we're just talking about here, but subdivided. Application from the France Hospitality for a site plan review to develop an approximately 18,500 square foot, 93-room hotel along with associated site and drainage improvements on a portion of present parcel 212041, also proposed for subdivision, which we just did and owned by TNT Mountain Investments. My official introduction. So, if you'd like to speak to this?
All right. All right, you've got me again. So, I'll give you, if you turn to page five on the handout, I'll give you a quick sort of rundown on the program of the hotel itself. What we're proposing is a 93-room Home Two Suites, which is a Hilton branded hotel. It is an extended stay hotel, which means that all guest rooms will include a kitchen and a living space. The building itself is three stories. Overall, building floor area is a little over 55,000 square feet, a building footprint of 18,415,000 square feet. Guest amenities will include an indoor swimming pool, an outdoor patio, fitness room, food and beverage services, which is breakfast for hotel guests only, and a small market area near the front desk. The south-south of Smith Bridge Road, it's part of the easement of the subdivision, and to the west of that, there's two accesses into the parking lot that also run north and south on the site with the hotel on a similar north-south orientation on the western side of the lot itself. The entrance or the port of cashier to the hotel is near the northeast corner of the hotel, further as from Smith Bridge Road. This was important in the sense that that, when you enter the building, that's where the public lobby is and front desk and the breakfast area. And part of the programming with Hilton, there's a relationship to the outdoor patio. So, it was important to have that near each other. And we also knew that getting that on the north side, sort of with views out the back of the property, it also has the advantages of not being near the street or near the residential abutting property to the west as well. So, I think all of those things added up to sort of leading the site plan to where it is today. The next page itself, we sort of go over a basic zoning summary again. Again, we meet the minimum lot size. We, the minimum frontage is 100 feet. The building is 286 feet back from the front property line. Sorry, minimum frontage, sorry, we're well over that. Minimum front yard setback is 30 feet. We are 72 and a half feet off that. Side yard setback minimum is 15 feet. The building is 37 feet. Provided rear yard setback is 15 feet. We are 325 feet. And then the building height, at three stories, we are complying under the 35-foot maximum building height. Page eight, we have here, I can show you the colored building elevation. That's what was submitted, outlines the composition of the building itself. I've also got some photos here which are built Home Two. So, the building design itself follows pretty closely to what Hilton requires for a Home Two Suites. It utilizes a lot of EPIS or synthetic stucco. People call it different things. What it enables us to do, I think, is meet a lot of the design guidelines that the town has in terms of offering variation in color, variation in depth, variation sort of horizontal and vertical banding, and that with some finistration articulation helps break up the massing of the building. You'll notice on the bottom elevation here, which would be the one facing east in the parking lot, to the right-hand side, you'll see what Hilton themselves called the beacon. It's part of the tower, it's a branding element. What that does, helps sort of draw attention to the main entrance of the hotel where there's a port of cashier, draws guests in. I think that also aligns well with the town's guidelines to clearly articulate the transition into the building itself. There's also some, some stone veneer at the bottom of the base of that building near the entrance again, helping differentiate where guests are to go as well. We also include on the application, if you now go to page number 10, there's also provisions for a monument sign near the, on the western side of the driveway that we've shown, that's again a branded element, and the size that we're showing is compliant with the signage regulations in Plymouth. And then one thing that we wanted to do, just, I can pull those up here as well. It's always nice to sew, and particularly if you've got a branded hotel, you can stand a rock, the inside of the hotel will look like, I know it seems to be a certain animal, just want to sort of help demonstrate sort of the quality of the build. It's all regulated by Hilton, we've built to those standards, and this will show what the interior of the building itself will look like. That's a quick run-through on the hotel programming. Again, I'm happy to turn it over to the board, and our team will be here to answer any questions that you may have for us.
So, one simple question, I think the answer is probably yes, just to clarify to make sure though. So, the part, the articulation of the entryway that goes above 35 feet, that's going to be non-occupied and...
Correct, that's all non-occupied. And I know there's provisions in the ordinance to, for towers and parapets that go above that, so yes.
I just wanted, I assume that's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you. I have a question for you. I would like to commend you on the design, that it's hard to make a building that big look good.
Thank you.
And, you know, the patio area on the north end near the river looks like a wonderful place for people to maybe enjoy breakfast or a cocktail. The south face that faces the road is less than, slightly, less than appealing, I guess. I'm wondering if, is there any option for that south building elevation that could make that architecturally more appealing or more, the top-left image, right? Is the south, is the face that would, image that would face the road?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're open to, I mean, if you look on the right-hand side, there's a little bit more articulation there that comes with the branded hotel with that patio, but I think we're more than open to offer more variation along that street-facing facade. I, with the guest rooms and stairs, we may be somewhat limited with sort of windows facing the street, but I think in terms of the material composition, we can do something with that.
We've heard from an abutter that's going to be looking at that, if it's built, for a long time. Can you please share with us what is the finished floor elevation of that building in comparison to Smith Bridge Road?
Do you have that information? You can dig it out. Yeah. One minute.
You've testified it's a three-story building.
Correct.
It will be greater in size than anything out there. And I think it will be very visible when you hear these elevations in just a minute. My follow-up question while you're digging that out will be, what have you done for screening and/or landscaping along Smith Bridge Road to try to break up this massing?
So, to address that first question about elevation of Smith Bridge Road versus the first-floor elevation, Smith Bridge Road, if you're looking at sheet 103B, has an elevation of 487. The first floor of our hotel would be at 488. So, it's approximately one foot higher for a first-floor elevation, but generally at the same elevation. If you're familiar with that area, it drops off precipitously right off Smith Bridge Road and into the site, and we're actually elevating the portion of the site. So, by the time we're done, they're almost at the same grade.
There's also, if I recall correctly, there's also kind of a berm on the side of the road where currently, I mean, I would imagine the grade goes up two or, two or three feet before it drops off.
In front of the farmhouse, correct.
Yeah.
And the second question...
Oh, I guess, I guess, other than this part, it's...
Yeah, we'll look further down. The second question about screening, there is that color presentation plan that does highlight some of the plants. submit a landscape plan, it's towards the back of the site plan app, L101B. And we do have some screening plants. This area here, also some street trees. We've added some evergreens along this property line. Obviously, open if the board wanted some different species or...
When you say evergreens, what are we referring to?
These are...
Because they're really tiny evergreens or really large evergreens?
Tend to plant them six to seven foot high from the nursery.
So, you noted, if I can ask, just, in laying out the site, you're taking great care for, you know, the abutting property residents. I assume you're aware there's also a veterinary clinic that's kind of towards the back of the site and off. Is there any concern that, you know, if they have larger animals there, are you concerned at all about the existing? I just want to make sure that you're aware that there's compatibility with the existing uses?
Yes, I mean...
That would become a problem for the hotel at least.
I can't speak for the owner development team. That particular issue hasn't come up as some, a concern.
Yeah.
I don't believe they have outdoor storage.
I don't think so.
No kennels there. I have driven around their property and there's a storage shed, but I don't think there's any kennels, so we love the sound of barking ducks.
All right. Thank you.
I actually was curious to ask members of the board how they feel about this, and I'm not certain this is a major concern for me. I'm just looking at our design guidelines and roofs and exposed structural members on large buildings, varied roofline elevation should be used to avoid the appearance or sense of long monotonous roofline expanses. Variations such as parapets, gables, or towers are required for every 60 feet or more of continuous horizontal roofline. And I'm not proposing you put, add some extra parapets to this for like decoration, because it probably would not work. I'm just kind of getting the feel of the board on that, because it is part of our design guidelines and...
I was going to mention that, because I thought we had, there was something about that.
I mean, it calls for more articulation of that roofline than we have, and maybe that's okay with the board? Can we, we can waive that?
Well, I mean, we're happy to work with you. I mean, obviously, these provisions in need to add parapet that doesn't necessarily contribute to the building height itself.
I was kind of joking about that as well.
No, I know, but, you know, I just, you know, this is baseline. I think Hilton's done a good job with their base design to break that facade up. Hotels generally are long buildings, and I think compared to some of the other brand out, out there, I think this lends itself well to breaking it up. And I think what's tough to see on the colored elevations, and that's why we brought the photos, which I think you'll see on the cover in page 10, there's some extra depth and that, you know, the materials allow ourselves to get some projection on there as well, which you're not looking at a single material in a single plane. I think between color and some depth variation, it's, you know, flat elevation to one thing, seeing the thing built and seeing photos, and that's why we have them help, I think, sell it and gets read a little bit differently, so.
No, and obviously, you did a lot with the facade to break it up.
Yeah.
Just reading the letter of the, kind of, the letter.
Oh, I understand, and we've read that too, and yeah, so, all right.
Some of the most picturesque buildings in the state are along the river in Manchester, and those are huge, long masses of really long...
No, it's not, it's not a deal breaker for me by any means.
I know.
I just wanted to bring it up because it's in here.
Right. No, I, I agree, and, you know, I think they've actually done quite a good job of breaking up the facade with enough elements that you don't really notice. I mean, if it were a long, straight building, like with a, with a smooth face and all in one plane, then, yeah, maybe something on the roof would make it look more appealing, but I really think that there's a, I think our design guidelines might be unnecessary in this situation because of the other elements that they've...
And we can waive that for sure. And we can waive that for sure. And the building doesn't necessarily need a hat, right?
It just needs a little more color, though.
So, we haven't done a public hearing yet, and I imagine there might still be some more questions before we get there.
I had a question.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's relevant, but I noticed there's 93 suites, so you're going to have 93, at least 93 cars.
Potentially.
And you've got four EV stations. How does that work?
So...
They all, like, take turns?
Well, the, not everyone is driving an electric car.
Right now.
Right now. If that does change in the future, we have made provision to add additional pedestals. We have the conduits shown in the plan, so we can expand as needed to meet the patrons' requirements. But I think it's generally 5% of the cars on the road are EV right now, which is more than it was 10 years ago, but it's...
New Hampshire's below that, but...
And New Hampshire's a little below that, so we're starting off with four, and we can increase it if the market changes.
Yeah. Well, I wasn't mean to critical, I'm just curious.
Oh, no. No, because people do, it's a, it's a requirement now, and Hilton, it's a Hilton requirement, so.
And it's not a Plymouth requirement, it's a, it's a suggestion, and we do appreciate, like, getting any of it, really. And it's obviously good for your patrons.
Correct. And I believe we still need to accept the site.
Oh, yeah, thank you for the reminder. Getting late, and I may carry away myself. Are we, are we ready to accept this as complete?
Good catch.
Is it, what did Joseph's report say?
I do have questions about the traffic study, but...
But there is a traffic study, so I think we can question the traffic study, but it is there, and so I...
That's my main concern.
That, so the fact that it is...
It has been noted that historically, this Smith Bridge Road intersection has the highest accident rate in Plymouth.
Mm-hmm. And we'll get, we'll get to the traffic issue in a moment. First, let's just see if we're complete here. I didn't write any notes to myself that we weren't complete. We've got lighting, we've got parking, we've got driveways, traffic study, and elevation. I'm thinking this is pretty thorough, and signage. Kind of going through the checklist in my brain.
Almost.
I'm going to say that...
Almost?
Doesn't have any of the permits.
I think we can be, they can always be a condition, though.
Right. I'm going to motion that we accept the application as complete, just to get the ball rolling. We can still discuss.
Okay, so a motion and a second to accept the application as complete. Is there any further discussion?
I was, I was anticipating more discussion, but hearing none.
No?
I think we're going to have it coming up.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay, so the application is accepted as complete. So, and thank you for the reminder, Joseph. So, before we get to the public hearing and all that, I mean...
We've already engaged in a lot of discussion already.
We have, and...
Which I appreciate.
I appreciate the very thorough traffic study, and and you know this is going to be an issue, and I don't want to speak for you, I mean, I've read the traffic study. I don't know if you want to just say a few words about that before we discuss it more.
If I may, joining us virtually is our traffic engineer, Jeffrey Dirk. He's with Vaness and Associates. Jeffrey, would you introduce yourself and if you want to run through your slides, it'd be helpful to bring the board up to speed where we're at.
Sure, let me, I'm just going to pull up the slides for a minute.
Sure, let me, I'm just going to pull up the slides for a minute. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. By way of introduction, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm the managing partner with Vanessan Associates and as you had mentioned, there's a transportation or traffic impact study as a part of the application that you have before you. I'm going to share my screen and just go through some summary slides that detail the information that's in the transportation assessment and then I can certainly answer any questions that the board may have. So is the board able to see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you.
The screen isn't working up there.
Is it not?
No. Should I?
Is there any way to turn that TV on?
Ah, it should be. I don't know if Dan is in the booth.
Dan is, oh, there he is.
Thanks, Dan.
You can let me know, Mr. Chairman, when you want me to proceed.
We're having a little AV issue here.
Yep.
I just want to make sure the audience can see as well, the public.
Thank you.
Thanks for the heads up, Sue.
What's up?
Thanks for the heads up.
You're welcome.
I can't see it all from here. No, I see light over there now. All right. So we're good to go? All right. Thanks, Dan. I think we're good to go?
Great, thank you. So as I mentioned, we're just going to go through some summary slides as they relate to the traffic impact study and I'll be happy to answer any questions. So the study itself was prepared in accordance with New Hampshire Department of Transportation standards. We did have a scope, or we submitted a scoping letter to the Department of Transportation to see if they wanted a formal scoping meeting to determine the parameters essentially of the transportation study. They'd indicated that they did, that a scoping meeting was not necessary and I'll talk about that in a minute. The reason for it was not so much local concerns. The reason for it was that as it relates to what the state needs to issue a driveway permit for the project, it was their opinion that what we had proposed and I'm going to go through for the scope of the study was sufficient for them to issue a driveway permit. And as you'd heard earlier on in the presentation, the state is currently reviewing the driveway permit application. We made the formal submission, which included the transportation study as well as the site plans and the associated work within the public right of way that we will need a permit for. That was all filed with the Department of Transportation last week and the hard copies of the plans were delivered this week, so it's currently undergoing review itself. Not, notwithstanding the comments that we've heard from the public and the board, as we've looked at how the project impacts motorist delays and vehicle queuing along Tenny Mountain Highway and Smith Bridge Road, the impact of the project as measured before and after we've added the traffic from the project was essentially an increase in vehicle queuing of between one and two additional vehicles. And that's primarily, I think, what everyone has pointed out, which is absent what we hope will be some improvements shortly down at the Smith Bridge Road intersection with New Hampshire 25, there are delays, extended delays trying to get out, particularly to make a left-hand turn. So in looking at left-hand turns coming off of Smith Bridge Road, trying to head back to New Hampshire or to Interstate 93, before the project's traffic, there's queuing and then what we looked at is how long does that queue extend after the project's traffic? And it was no more, as I mentioned, than one to two vehicles. So it wasn't significant in terms of impacts, looking at vehicle queuing on the roadway. The driveway itself operates very well. There's limited delay in vehicle queuing, but again, how the driveway relates, given its proximity to New Hampshire 25, is directly related to queuing on the Smith Bridge Road Road. So if that queue extends back to the driveway, then there will be more delay than will be anticipated. The queuing didn't get back to a point where it consistently blocked the ability to be able to enter or exit this property. One of the board members had mentioned about lines of sight exiting the driveway. So the sight lines at the driveway exceed what's required for safe operation of the driveway based on the speed of approaching traffic. As you're looking to the left coming out of the project, or if you're approaching the driveway from New Hampshire 25, because of the bend in the roadway there, the sight lines are limited to about 260 feet, but vehicles as they're traveling up and approaching the driveway are not going at a high rate of speed just because of the curvature of the roadway. So the sight line, you can see basically down to New Hampshire 25 and that distance is about 260 feet from where the driveway is positioned. So it does meet what's required for safety based on the speed of traffic that's approaching the driveway, given the fact that we have the curvature of the roadway itself. So digging into the study in a little bit more detail, this slide just shows the overall context of the project site. The site where the hotel is going to be located is only a small portion and that was basically an action that the board took as a part of the previous hearings. As we're looking at the yellow colored site, we divide it in half. Essentially what we're looking at is the western portion of the site, so the portion that's closest to the Plymouth Animal Hospital is where the project is going to be located. Our study area, before we go to the next slide, the Department of Transportation asked that we look at the Smith Bridge Road intersection with New Hampshire 25 and they did not ask that we look at any intersections. The Fairground Road intersection was not requested to be studied because the opinion based on what we had looked at as well as the Department of Transportation is recognizing that there are delays and the difficulty of getting out onto Tenny Mountain Highway, the majority of the traffic is expected to be oriented toward the highway. The reason for that is that the type of use that's here, which is a hotel, the majority of the patrons are going to be coming to and from 93 and the expectation is that they would then get off of 93, turn onto Tenny Mountain Highway and then come in from that direction. If this were a residential development or a commercial property, let's say, where there was a lot more local knowledge and how to use the roadway, we would expect more use of Fairground Road, but that's not the nature of this use. It's a hotel use and again, the majority of this traffic is going to be oriented to and from 93, so it's going to be people from out of town and they, you know, will have some local knowledge by way of ways and other directional features, but most of them will be on New Hampshire 25 and using Tenny Mountain Highway to come in. So that was kind of the rationale for the study area and that's what DOT had asked us to study as a part of this project itself. So in looking at the traffic characteristics of the project, that's what's shown on the slide here. And again, this was some of the basis of DOT's decision in terms of the study area and the lack of a need for a formal scoping meeting. What we're showing is what is predicted to be generated in terms of trips or traffic from the 93 units that will be within the hotel. So the top number here, the 410, that's the daily number. So over a daily basis, the project is expected to produce about 410 vehicle trips. It's 205 entering and 205 exiting. And again, that's over the daily operational period, so 24 hours, let's say, for the hotel itself. To put that in context, Tenny Mountain Highway, under existing conditions, accommodates about 12,000 vehicles per day, two-way traffic. So the 410 is essentially what will we get added to about 12,000 vehicles that are currently traveling along Tenny Mountain Highway. The next three numbers that you see under, here under the total column, the first number 32, that's the amount of traffic that will be produced during a one-hour period on a weekday during the morning time period. So a one-hour period between seven and nine in the morning when the traffic volumes on the roadways are at their highest level, the project will add about 32 vehicles on top of that number. The next number 33, that's the same. It's a one-hour period in the evening, so the highest traffic volume hour between four and six, the project's expected to add 33 vehicles on top of that hourly volume. And then the last number, the 50, this is on a Saturday, so this is the highest traffic volume hour, one hour on a Saturday that would occur between 11 and two. The project's going to produce about 50 vehicle trips in terms of net increase in traffic. So the peak hour traffic volumes on Tenny Mountain Highway, they're about 10% of the daily number, so for 12,000 vehicles per day during any one peak hour, the hourly flow is somewhere close to about 1,200 vehicles. And so 32 would get added to the 1,200. Same thing with the 33 or the 50. So again, going back to the rationale in terms of the lack of need for a scoping meeting, it's because the relative increase in traffic on a daily basis as well as during the peak hours is not significant. So if we're looking at somewhere around 30 to 35 vehicles, you know, during the weekday time periods, when that's really when we have the heavy traffic flows, it's one additional vehicle every two to three minutes on the roadway. So that's why even in looking at impacts at the Smith Bridge Road, Tenny Mountain Highway intersection, it's not significant because that traffic as it gets added, it's over a dispersed amount of time and it's not concentrated. So that's why we're not showing any significant delays at the intersections. To the extent that some portion of this traffic does end up on Fairground Road, it's going to be a small percentage of these 32, 33, or 50, so it's not a large increase in traffic that would occur on that roadway. And again, we're expecting the majority of the traffic will be on Tenny Mountain Highway. So this does show that distribution of traffic, so we have about 80% of those trips I had just mentioned are expected to be oriented to and from the, to and from the east, so heading towards Interstate 93, about 15% heading to and from the west. And this 5% is what we expect would be probably oriented to and from Fairground Road. Again, given the nature of the use, which is a hotel and the demographics of the clients that they expect to derive, the majority of it is expected to be more of not local traffic, but regional traffic coming from the interstate highway. So that's what facilitates this distribution pattern that you do see here. So before I get to the recommendations of the transportation study, I do want to mention a couple of things because this has been discussed by the board and some of the residents as well that spoke on the previous application. So we do know in working with the Department of Transportation as well as with the town, there are plans for an improvement project at the Smith Bridge Road intersection. So as you look at the transportation analysis, we've looked at what operating conditions, so delays and queuing would occur at that intersection if there were no improvements. So basically just the two-lane approach on Smith Bridge Road, having the center turn lane on Tenny Mountain Highway and how the project would impact those conditions. As I mentioned, what that analysis shows is there are delays if you're trying to make a left-hand turn from Smith Bridge Road and that translates into queuing of about six vehicles without the project. The predicted queuing with the project would go from six to about seven vehicles. So it's not significant in terms of how the project would impact those conditions. But that being said, it still is queuing and there are long delays that result in that queuing, so that's not going to go away until there's an improvement there. The improvement that's planned at the intersection, as the board probably well knows, is two scenarios. It's either reconfiguring the intersection to function as a modern roundabout, so basically sticking a circle in the middle of that intersection and having vehicles go around it, or installing a traffic signal. So we've analyzed the intersection under both of those conditions. There is an improvement gained from putting in either one of those traffic control solutions. Probably the most significant benefit is to safety and that was another thing that was brought up by one of the board members. We did work with the Plymouth Police Department to understand what the crash history looks at, looks like at this intersection. The Plymouth Police Department provided us seven years' worth of crash data all the way up to, I think, March of 2024. That data indicates that in a seven-year period, there were 16 crashes in total that happened at this intersection, so it's an average of about 2.3 crashes per year. So it's a, it's a large number of crashes, but as you're looking at it on average, it's not a significant number, so about two crashes per year at that intersection. That being said, there's still a need for improvement because we want to really get those crash rates or the crash, number of crashes low. That has been a focus of the improvements that are proposed at the intersection, so those will address not only those operating conditions, but I think more importantly, it will address safety at the intersection. It is hopeful, I think, board mentioned this as well, that that is within, it's in the 10-year plan. We're hoping it will happen in a shorter time period than the 10-year plan, but we did look at, you know, how this project would impact those, the improvement project at the intersection. And of course, traffic operations or delays and queues get reduced with those improvements in place and so the project's impact is not significant as it relates to those queues because again, as we look back at the amount of traffic that's going to be produced, it's somewhere between 33 and 50 peak hour trips dispersed as you see here, so it wasn't significant. So in looking at the recommendations from the project, we do have two sets of recommendations. The first is dealing with the site plan. So these are things that you do see on the site plan that's before you and they're standard things that you'd expect, making sure the driveway is wide enough for two-way traffic, that we have appropriate traffic control both within the site and as vehicles are exiting the site, signs and landscaping to make sure that, I mentioned those sight lines, they do meet what's required for safe operation, but we want to make sure that as we're looking at a robust landscaping plan and placement of signs, that there's nothing placed that would reduce the sight lines that are currently available, including snow piles. So that's what you see as kind of the last recommendation here. And then finally, we do have some trip reduction measures that are recommended and will be implemented as a part of the project. These mostly focus on some of the employee trips to the extent that we can encourage carpool or van pooling to the site. That's something that we want to encourage. And then as we're looking at potential for alternative modes of transportation and really this is about walking and biking to make sure that we provide onsite accommodation so that that can happen safely and that is we're thinking about kind of the design of the project and any offsite improvements that might be made that we're facilitating those modes of transportation. And one of the, one of those does include making sure that we have secure bicycle parking within the project site. So that is the last slide that I have. I will stop sharing now. I do know that you have a staff report as well that had talked about, you know, this interim condition as it relates to, you know, what happens between now and when the potential improvement measure down at the intersection goes in place. So I know there's some other things for the board to discuss, but that, that's where we're at anyways. And as I mentioned, this application is into the Department of Transportation for review. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have now or later on in the presentation or if you decide to have peer review.
I'm kind of curious to flip this the other direction. I, I think there are going to be a lot of lingering questions about the traffic impact, but also thinking about on the hotel and the visitor impact. By your numbers, about 80% of the people coming out of this hotel are going to be making the left turn and they are probably not going to be happy people. And.
I agree.
So I mean, I think there is a bigger question about the traffic impact for the town, but I also think there's an issue with like just accommodating guests as well and the kind of pleasure of that experience. Yeah?
This is my personal pet peeve, but 90% of the people that pull, that take a left out of Smith Bridge Road do not use the center turn lane. All you need is a clearance from the left, you pull into the center lane and then you merge, like.
But the fact is they don't use it.
Like 90, like that is how you're supposed to use a center turn lane. It's for, it's for decelerating to turn onto Smith Bridge and it's for accelerating away from Smith Bridge onto Tenny Mountain Highway. And the majority of people wait for an opening from the right so they can get right out in.
I will tell you.
That eastbound lane.
Using, using that method.
Try it. I do it every time I'm there.
Using that method, I've gotten honked at many times.
But that's, but that's, like I said, because not many people do it. Most people don't expect you're going to do it, so when you pull out, people in the lane slam on their brakes and freak out, but like you're doing the right thing.
You are.
They're just ignorant of what.
I think people are terrified.
I really do.
You're right, but like it's, it's, we shouldn't be accepting abnormal driving behavior. This, like any other place where there's a turning lane, you use it.
Planning forecasts all of that.
I know.
Peter?
I have a question for the traffic engineer.
Thank you.
You mentioned that you looked at both a roundabout and a signalized intersection.
Yes.
Do you have those alternative concept plans in your traffic analysis? And can you share them?
So I'm not, so I'll defer to your plan, but I'm not aware that there are actually concept plans that have been drawn for that because when we consulted with DOT, they didn't have those available to us.
Oh, so you didn't prepare them?
No, no, we, so what was provided to us was what, what the options are that are being evaluated and what, and basically the number of travel lanes that would be there. So, so we analyzed that condition, but there's not, we are not aware of any concept plans being prepared, so, and we did not do that. No, this was, this was information provided to us. No, this was information provided to us by the Department of Transportation.
I think they want to do a study before they even make that plan.
Sure. Follow-up question. You mentioned and you described both the ADT and the peak hour, and you mentioned the trips are somewhere around 30, and the common number is it's going to exceed 100 before you, you know, typically DOT gets excited. But my question is, how close is that intersection to meeting signal warrants?
So we did not perform a signal warrants analysis for the intersection. I mean, the project, one of the things in terms of meeting the signal warrants is the traffic volume warrant is you have to meet the criteria or the thresholds for a solid eight hours on a weekday. What you see from this project's traffic is it's certainly not, this project isn't going to drive meeting the signal warrants. It just doesn't produce enough traffic over a solid eight hours on a weekday because as you imagine for the hotel, it's busy in the morning, busy in the evening when people are coming and going, but in between that and after that, there's not a lot of activity. So the project's not going to drive meeting the warrants. I think one of the reasons why the roundabout is being considered is because of exactly what you mentioned, which is it may not be that the volume on Smith Bridge Road is sufficient over a solid eight hours on a weekday to trigger the traffic signal warrant, and that's why the roundabout as well is being considered.
Thank you.
I'm thinking it might be good, in addition to whatever DOT needs to do for permitting, to have our engineer look at some of these numbers and...
Yeah, I agree.
I would also make the suggestion to the board and the town to solicit two separate reviews. I do not believe KV Partners are traffic engineers. They are competent to review the site plans, but not as much for TIA. So I would suggest the board consider that.
Okay.
We do have the benefit that numerous DOT engineers will pore over it, but like anything, it's just another opinion.
Yeah.
One of the things that I'd like to get to tonight is, in order to help our applicants move this forward as quickly as possible, is that, you know, I think we're, as a board, we're going to want some engineering review, and I think that, do we need to set up an escrow for review now, or do we need, does that have to happen as a development agreement once it's approved?
So for plan review, you could do that before an approval and usually in between, you know, first hearing and a continued hearing. You know, with the development agreement, often we have the escrow for construction inspection and observation, but the other one, the plan review can happen in the interim. And I did, I did discuss the question with KV Partners, the town's engineer. Ultimately, the call is of the planning board. He did say he was willing to provide the peer review of the traffic study in this case, but obviously, the board's has the discretion to decide how they want to handle.
So we might want a traffic study either from KV or someone else, and probably a stormwater study as well, I would imagine, yeah. Otherwise...
I have another request.
Yes?
Does anybody else have any traffic questions or comments? I think Dirk probably can be dismissed.
Well, the Fairgrounds Road, should we include the Fairgrounds Road on that if they look at that? I know it seems, but the thing that I wonder about this, these are, they're short-term living units, possibly? Can, how long can people stay there?
I have people that...
Maxed out for months.
What?
So it's a hotel, they'll be like a kitchenette. So if someone, generally, to be categorized as a short, extended stay hotel, it's, you could stay up to 30 days, and then it's up to sort of the owner of the hotel to move them around or do what they need to do, but nobody's gonna, shouldn't make it an apartment building.
I guess a good question to follow up, I think it's a good question. What is a typical stay in a home to suites?
I'd have to defer to the hotel owners on that one.
I mean, I think the concern is if someone's there long enough, they're going to figure out they might want to go a different way. Is that your concern?
It is, and I know that there are some businesses in the area that bring in people that they have to house for 30, 60, sometimes 90 days. And clearly, they're going to figure out the shorter route or the easiest route while the state's deciding what they're going to do out there. So that's, I just think that Fairgrounds Road should be included.
Some information for the applicant. I want to talk about, a little bit about traffic, but also the town looked at changing zoning off of Fairgrounds Road, and we decided not to because of the infrastructure and because of that intersection at Smith Bridge Road and Tenny Mountain Highway, and because of other infrastructure issues. One thing, I was involved with the state engineers that came to talk about a new intersection possibly at Tenny Mountain Highway and Smith Bridge Road. They cannot believe there hasn't been any deaths at that intersection. And they're, from my interpretation of what they said was they're just completely surprised. And my interpretation was the townspeople that are used to driving that road know what they're getting into when they, when they are going to go onto Smith Bridge Road and when they're going to leave, and they've had a lot of practice, and you're bringing in new people on a regular basis. There, it's not just the weight, that's already the biggest problem in this town is that intersection. There's nothing worse. Parker Street maybe, but that is the worst intersection. And, and not that I'm picking on this because we had an information evening for a very similar project just up the road, and there was no opposition from the town. There was a lot of encouragement from the planning board because the intersection emptied into a road with a, with a traffic light. And so the concept is great, it's just I don't think you could ask for a worse spot in Plymouth to do this. That's my concern, I just really surprised.
I know, I was just thinking the same thing.
One thing I think about is turning left is an issue, as we all know, but turning right is an issue if the hood on the vehicle turning left is taller than your hood. Because you cannot pull right if you cannot see past service trucks or taller trucks if you're in a smaller car. And I know it's a small nuance, but turning right is also an issue if you have a vehicle that's physically taller than your line of sight to your left because you can't see what's coming.
It's really just trying to get the state to pay attention to this area and do something.
I think, I think the project team agrees with everything you guys are saying. The best thing that could happen is a circle gets built, and that's in the plan. So the question is, in the state's plan, right? So in the short term, is the additive traffic flow the difference? And it's not a great intersection before we're there, it won't be after we're there, so I don't think we can, I think we agree with what you're saying.
And I spoke with one engineer at this table one night, many years ago, and he said, we're not even sure. The reason it's not going forward is because it's so close to a light already to put a traffic circle there or to put a light. They just keep wondering whether that's even going to make sense. And they're just throwing out ideas, Hail Marys, that well, maybe we go straight and go through someone's private property, which is a taking, and that's going to be really difficult. This year of 2032, maybe 10 years past that. And again, the concept is great, just the location. And I, I want something to be built for the town tax purposes, but it's the site.
Neil?
This intersection, Tenny Mountain Highway, was constructed 71 years ago, and it was complete farmland, the whole thing. And, and right now, we have a high flow of traffic coming down Quincy Road and Fairground Road, feeding into Smith Bridge Road. And if, if it gets more congested, it's already a failed intersection. We've already got high frustration levels there, and we reduced the speed limit down to 35 on Tenny Mountain Highway so, to try to prevent accidents and slow people down. And it'll probably have to be reduced again. But you're going to see an increase of traffic on Fairground Road that, all that traffic that's coming towards Smith Bridge Road is going to start to go the other way. So Fairground Road is going to start to get up, and they're really, that road really isn't up to capacity either.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the applicant's engineer, similar to traffic, perhaps a little bit more brief, give an overview about stormwater and drainage on this facility and how your design will interact or not interact with the floodplain and the Baker, all that.
And just before we completely make that switch, I think the, this board is going to ask for a analysis of the traffic study and to have an engineer look at that in some capacity, whoever that may be. But yes, let's take a look at the stormwater.
I think they expect that.
Yeah.
Traffic consultant to engineer the traffic study. Are you talking the traffic study that is into the DOT now for the driveway permit?
I think it would be good to have an engineer look at the study that you gave us.
Yes, okay.
And just kind of run it through our own...
Sure.
Peer review.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So the site is adjacent to Baker River. There is floodplain on the property. I'm not sure if the board is aware, but FEMA revised the maps for the Baker River, became active actually February of this year. And so the elevation was changed significantly from what they were from 2008. So in 2008, the 2008 maps, which were valid until February of this year, the floodplain elevation was 487.9. In the revised maps, it was reduced to 484.3. So it was lowered 3.6 feet for both this section of Baker River and quite a ways downstream. The changes...
Were out there last week?
That's the 100-year, that's the 100-year flood, right?
100-year flood. The FEMA maps have been significantly revised for the Baker River.
Wow.
So obviously, that had impacts on our project. Whereas last year, when the master plan was presented to you, there was significant floodplain impacts. They're relatively minor at this point, we're on the fringe of the floodplain. And we do meet the threshold for filing a flood impact study with, under the Alteration of Train Permit, so we're preparing that right now. It's almost done. But we're able to construct the project without significant flood mitigation just because we're on the fringe, and we'll be able to demonstrate that to DES as part of the AOT. So that's the floodplain. As for stormwater, we are blessed on this site with having excellent granular soils, and we are making the most use of that. And our primary stormwater management facility is a large infiltration basin that's located behind or closer to the river. In that area, it's open field today. We're not cutting down any trees to construct it, but we would excavate, remove the 20 or so inches of topsoil and create an infiltration basin there. All of the stormwater from the building rooftop and from the parking lot is directed first to the four bay and then the infiltration basin. And using that method, we're able to match or reduce historic flow rates to the Baker River and meet the DES standards for stormwater treatment.
So you have a stormwater pollution prevention plan?
They will. So, yes, I want to make sure I understand what the term means to you. A SWIP. So yes, prior to construction, the EPA also has their own set of guidance, and under their National Pollution, the Discharge Elimination System or NFTs, yes, we will be filing an ENOI with a SWIP. But that is a construction permit that's been in place at least two weeks prior to groundbreak. The state DES has their own erosion control requirements and stormwater maintenance and stormwater standards. So yes, to answer your question.
I'm thinking, unless the board has some more stormwater questions, it might be time for a public hearing soon.
Neighbors are all set with no extra water going their way, or you've got some really close neighbors, I just want to make sure they're protected.
Right, so as part of the Alteration of Train Permit, the state reviews a flood impact study that's very detailed, and as soon as it's done, I'll be happy to share it with the planning board or whoever would like to see it. It'll be a public record. And thus, the criteria that the state has is zero change in elevation at the property line, at all property lines for floodplain, and you must demonstrate that. And it's essentially taking what FEMA does with their modeling of the river, using their HECRAS software. We have a consultant who's taking that model and adding our project into it, and then whatever improvements we need to make so that we don't increase floodplain levels at any point on any property line. Yes.
Can I have one specific question on this?
Go ahead.
I know we want to get to a public hearing really quickly. Our water and sewer wanted to verify that you weren't planning on having any of the stormwater go into the sanitary sewer?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely not.
Great, thank you. No, I, he just wanted to verify. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so with that, I think we'll open a public hearing. It is currently 8:58, so I'll open a public hearing. If you would like to speak to this application, please come up and identify yourself and say what you need to say or ask a question. Yes, please.
John, is it fair to say that this is not likely to be the only opportunity for a public hearing?
I would imagine this will be continued. But please come up and...
I just wanted to make sure that people didn't feel like we had to get everything out tonight.
Okay. Again, my name is Richard Dion, and I want to make one comment about the traffic. I'm not going to belate this. There are people who have realized that there is a shortcut to get to Tenny Mountain Highway, and that's by going through my yard, over my lawns, in order to get out and bypass all the traffic that backs up on Tenny Mountain Highway. Another comment I have to make is that we have lots of clients, my wife, who has a law firm in that building, and my business, I deal with special operators, the FBI, Marshal Service, and a few others who know how to drive, and they're terrified of pulling out of my yard to get onto the Tenny Mountain Highway. They refer to that center lane as a suicide lane. The state does not keep it well marked, and we've asked about it, I have asked about it, and it's yes, yes, yes. I've been in that building 10 years, and I'm still waiting for their improvement plan on handling traffic, and it hasn't come about yet. I want, I want to ask the gentleman, I'm here, I'm sorry, I'm here, and I'm going to be looking out my window at this front right here. Which I estimate will probably be what, 45 feet tall?
35.
35? I don't know how wide the building is, so...
60 feet.
I'm sorry?
60 feet wide.
So I'm going to have a 60-foot wide, 35-feet-high blank wall, and I would just ask for some consideration on that particular part of it. In terms of, and this may be the inappropriate time, I'm concerned about dust control during the project itself. I'm concerned about the number of 10-wheelers or whatever number of size dump trucks you're going to have coming to and from, whether you're going to be working nights or days or weekends or whatever that happens to be. I've answered most of my questions, and I appreciate it, and I do want to make one comment. My daughter's an executive at Marriott. How come you're not going Marriott?
There's already one here.
I know, but we have plenty of them next door to each other. I am concerned about the, the egress from this driveway out. My driveway's right there. It's very tempting. I am going, if anybody here has gone by my property, you see my orange tractor in the middle of the driveway to keep people from doing this. They drive around it, but, um, and I'm gonna gate it. But I'm, I am concerned about this left-right. Coming out of here, turning right is an easy thing to do. I don't know where you're gonna go from there. Turning left is not so easy, considering this construction company at Piper down the road here that has their traffic moving all the time with, they're hauling all kinds of heavy equipment. And they have the same problem getting out. Be honest with you, some of the drivers, and they did all the work for me, some of the drivers say they just bull their way out. And I'm not sure that's a good way to go around solving traffic problems. And it's very tempting. Some people actually do the same kinda thing. They do try your method of swinging into that middle lane. Try it sometime on, at four o'clock in the afternoon or at eight o'clock in the morning. And people are not considerate. I'm, how long is this project gonna take? If you could start tomorrow, when would it end? I'm not point, I'm not looking at you particularly, except you're gonna be driving the trucks.
Thirteen to eighteen months.
No, go ahead.
Just for the audience, uh, it's eighteen to twenty-month construction cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Start to people staying.
Mm-hmm.
Broke me around the first guess.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to come up and speak?
Two others. Oh, he comes for you. He was sleeping earlier. He was.
Thank you.
I stand in support of the project. The problem that it has technical problems with, uh, access is, uh, not their fault. It's our fault. We've got fifty years of documentation. Every ten years, this Division Two, New State of New Hampshire, has got a ten-year plan. We've done our, I was on the Master Plan Committee forty years ago. We've got a lot of schemes and dreams in that project and product. Implementation's less than perfect. Okay? So, um, while these roads, including Tenny Mountain, were designed back seventy, eighty years ago, uh, didn't have that much traffic, and well, welcome to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-thirty. We've grown up a little bit. Uh, we've need to, I guess, use our political will as a community to, uh, have the discussion with the folks down in Concord that they need to move on all of the design systems that they have envisioned in the last fifty years for the upgrade of Tenny Mountain Highway. You know, we, the people of Plymouth, don't have, we don't have any control of the element of Tenny Mountain's a state item. But we do have the political will, uh, needing to impress upon Department Transportation that we need to address that intersection and, um, all the aspects of Tenny Mountain's highway infrastructure along the bounds that are less than perfect. But the fact that economic development, this is, uh, one of those items that helps us along that way. And it won't be the last, but we do have to, uh, acknowledge, accept, and appreciate that we need to upgrade our infrastructure in the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Thanks, Frank.
Please come up.
Uh, Dave Cody, again. I'm sure I'm not gonna come close to all the questions I have or the comments I have to make. But, um, first of all, just about the roads, uh, getting in and out, um, off, off from, uh, uh, Smith Bridge Road and Tenny Mountain Highway. Um, we have, my business has, um, eighty or ninety clients a day leave my driveway and turn left, eighty or ninety a day. And it's not unusual at all to be waiting at the intersection for about a minute and a half, minute and a half tonight. And, um, if you take two people, two, if your numbers are one to two, or whatever your numbers say, or he says, the numbers don't mean anything until you're out there on the road waiting on the other side. Numbers don't mean anything. And when you've got clients that are fifth in line and wait seven minutes, they're not happy. Now, and you're talking about two years of construction, trucks? I mean, this is my business. And, uh, two years of trucks and, uh, water, whatever, to keep the, you know, your mud, your, your mud down and your dust down, and, um, and just creating more and more hazard. Um, you know, we all know it's a horrend, my, my one, my biggest pet peeve in, about traveling is also people that don't know how to use the middle lane. But there's also, there's no breakdown lanes coming the other direction. If you've got somebody, if you're turning left and there's somebody beside you turning to right, you can't see any oncoming traffic. It's just a cluster. And, um, I don't know, there is, you know, without a traffic light or something there, there's no, there's, there's, there's no good answer that we're gonna come up with here tonight. The other question I have, questions I have pertaining more to the site. To begin with, um, on the original maps, the big ones that were presented, given to us here tonight, um, my clinic isn't on there. And my clinic is probably, um, you know, from my driveway or from where I park, under the trees, and you've got curly trees indicated, indicated on your map, those little curly trees aren't where they are. Number one. Number two, uh, 'cause I park under those curly trees, and they're on the lot line. And when I take three steps, giant steps from my truck, I'm in the field where you're gonna be building. And I take, you know, fifteen feet or whatever it is, that little patio that's gonna be so beautiful. Do the people that are gonna stay in that place know that on Sunday morning at seven o'clock during breakfast or lunch that I'm gonna have a two-hundred-pound pig out there cash-rating him? Do they know that I have horses come in there, um, on a daily basis, um, and other farm animals? Do they know that? Are they willing to do something? Yeah, I see that.
We're shown.
I'm sorry?
I just wanted to say that the, the clinic is shown there.
It's not shown in the plot.
Okay, right.
And there's a bunch of little Curly Q stuff that's not there.
Okay.
And, but anyway, um, they, they don't know that. And, um, uh, and people are what they are, and they're not all, um, law-abiding citizens. And, uh, on days of, of graduations, et cetera, when you have maybe a little bit less than perfect people staying in a place like this, um, I have, I have, uh, a, a long, longtime veterinary hospital, and, um, and there are things that are in that clinic that people want. And I, you know, it's, it's been a minor problem in the past, and it's gonna be a bigger problem in the future. There are kids that use, uh, from August, uh, I think from the first of August till the middle of November, beginning of December, there are kids that use the, the, my, the football fields that I, I let them use and have, with lots and lots of help and friends built years ago. And, and I don't even know how many of those are every single night during the week in, from, from first of August. And before that, the kids that play lacrosse, um, and various other soccer, various other entities use that. And that adds to that traffic that goes out of there every single night. And that's not in those studies, because it, it can't be. And, um, and, um, it's a, it's a bad, bad design, a bad place to put it. And the other last question I have before, and I have tons more questions that I totally wasn't prepared for, but, um, but, um, the wetland delineation that's taken place there or have to take place, I assume, is that gonna be mitigated on-site? Is that where that little drainage pond is gonna be, uh, to catch water? And if it's not, is it still on-site or is it somewhere else? And how's that gonna affect the other lot down the road? Just, uh, there's a ton of unanswered questions here, and this can't be the end of, end of this, and it's a very, very poor place to put, um, a, 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 well, I, I applaud the fact that, that you wanna keep everything in one spot, but, um, i.e. Tenny Mountain Highway. But it's not a good spot, um, not now anyway. And to put it there and just try to hold it for the future, it's not a good thing either. So I'm totally opposed to it, and there's a, a lot of things that I, that I haven't brought up yet that, um, I don't remember. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I introduced myself before. I'm Danielle Sargent. I live right here. So my house is about seventeen hundred square feet, and this is eighteen thousand five hundred. I will be in the shadow of this building, literally. This wasn't really what I planned to say tonight, but, um, it's thirty feet from my home, so this is a serious impact to my quality of life. Um, I've lived at thirty Smith Bridge Road for twenty years. I oppose the application for the subdivision and the application for the hotel. They are on the environmentally sensitive zone, and the hundred-year floodplain. My concerns are impact to land and water quality, including my well water. I'm on a well. I have a septic system. Increased risk in flooding and damage to that habitat, that hayfield is habitat. Other environmental implications, as well as noise and light pollution. Uh, as everybody's talked about tonight, the traffic is a major concern, and you do take your life in your hands when you pull out that road, which I do daily. I request independent engineering reviews of the traffic study, uh, the report, the site plan, the drainage. The second drainage location is here, just literally right off my driveway, where they have another catch basin or whatever it's called. That's a concern to me. Yeah, so at this time, I request that the board endeavor to minimize the impact, denying this or considering shifting the entrance to Tenny Mountain Highway, moving it out here if it weren't subdivided, if it were similar to what they did at the Fairfield. Nobody fought that. There was an intersection you could pull in. Increase and improve the buffer between myself and the proposed hotel. And to paraphrase the Town of Plymouth zoning ordinance, I ask you to protect habitat, agricultural land, river quality, historic and cultural resources, to lessen congestion, to secure safety, to promote good civic design, and to protect the value of land and homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
Good evening. My name is Frank Hansley. You just heard from my daughter. Um, I'm concerned about the amount of cubic foot of fill that you'll be putting in this area. As, as you all know, it's a very wetland. And can somebody of you guys tell me how many cubic yards of fill you'll be putting into this pond of sorts? 'Cause you know, just think about it. If that table's full of water and you fill up the middle of it with, with soil, gravel, color, what you want, you know, where's that water gonna go that's already there? It's gonna mushroom out. It's gonna go into the river. It's gonna create splashes to every, uh, butter. And I hope you'll consider that as you make your choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Was that? Never mind, okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, um, this evening or on Zoom as well? If you're on Zoom, you're gonna unmute yourself and, um, identify yourself? No? So I suspect this hearing will be continued, but, um, from the sounds of the board so far. I suspect also we're gonna have a little bit more of a conversation before we get there. I might need to take like a three or four-minute break for a moment, um, to go around the corner there. I don't know if you wanna continue without me and...
Sue, do you wanna take over?
John.
Or if we could all just take five and like-
All five minutes. Well-
Take, take, take a stretch for a moment. I just, I just, this, we're going long. I just need a little break.
I think we can wrap this up pretty quickly with a motion to continue, but my, my own-
But it, but before we do that, we need to know exactly what we want for our next meeting.
Did you close the public hearing?
We can leave it open for now and, what's that?
Do you want me to take over while you're gone?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Sue, if you're okay with me-
Please do.
-continuing the meeting.
Yep.
So the board has, uh, options. We, we could make a decision tonight, but I think it would be, um, premature. Uh, I, I think that we've heard multiple people discuss the need for engineering review of the traffic study and the, and the, and the, uh, drainage. So my question is, do we want to request, Joseph, we don't have escrow funds set up currently, do we?
Nothing at present.
Would, would the applicant be willing to provide escrow funds for an engineering review at this point? Okay. Can, all right, I'm, I'm going to suggest that we ask for a motion to consider, to continue and ask that the applicant work with the town staff to, uh, set up an, an appropriate escrow for engineering review. But we should define what, what, what we want reviewed. Please contribute.
I was just gonna say, just discussion-
You're, you're, you're a member of the board.
Yeah, discussion.
If you're not voting for the board members.
It would be helpful to the applicant if we specify what we're asking. It'd also be helpful for Joseph too, so he can solicit the appropriate, um, proposals from the various professionals that will be providing those services.
I, I don't doubt that the site has excellent drainage, but I would like to have an engineer review the construction and details of, of the, uh, infiltration basin and review the calculations.
Yeah, so just, I'm gonna speak to the applicant. The town has a single review engineer, KV Partners. You're okay with them? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, um, one of the, uh, statements made by Frank that, you know, it's possibly the town's fault that it's not taking care of the infrastructure at that intersection. The town tried so hard when I was on the select board, and I-
Right.
-believe Neil was on it at the same time, when we had a special meeting with the state engineers that would actually design it. We pleaded with them to fix that. No one in town wants that intersection the way that it is. And they basically looked at us and said, no one's died there.
Both highways are state highways, are they not? I mean, the town has very little authority to-
Right, but-
-to do that.
And we pushed as much as we could, and they did not wanna budge. And I, I really fear that three, uh, two thousand thirty-two may not happen. But, you know, no one wants anybody to get hurt, but it could, could start the engineering sooner, just, you just-
I'm going to-
Hope and pray.
I'm going to seed my virtual gavel back to John.
Okay. Miss anything important?
Nope.
So with the assumption that we're probably gonna end up, um, continuing this, this, um, hearing, um, I'm just looking for my own checklist.
The, the applicant did indicate they'd be willing to work with the town to-
Escrow and, okay.
And KV Partners is acceptable.
Okay. So we'll be looking at stormwater, we'll be looking at traffic, um, anything else?
My, my main concern about traffic is really not about in and out of the site. My main concern is about the intersection of Tenny Mountain Highway. But Sue expressed a concern about potential impact of long-term residents using Fairgrounds Road as a, as a workaround and potential impact of that.
So for the board and the public, the traffic engineer mentioned they asked specifically for something that's called a scoping meeting. That's where the state says, we'll tell you what you want to study. And the state basically said, eh, you're not big enough, we don't care. That's my take on it, but that- That's my take on it, but that's essentially what they said. But the town can ask for that TIA or the Traffic Impact Analysis to be extended. Like you said, Sue, we want to see what happens at Fairgrounds Road intersection. That is well within our purview. So, we should discuss that and see if that is something that the board feels is important. We've heard from abutters, they feel it's important. And so, I also would parrot what we heard from our residents.
I would echo that.
I think, I think it should be extended, and, and I think we likely would hear a similar sentiment from a specific traffic peer review, that perhaps the scope of their study should be expanded a little. I can't define a little, I'm not a traffic engineer.
Yes?
I don't want to argue with you on that point, but can you help us with that? If that request was made, would you be suggesting an expanded traffic study on the, on the state roads?
Possibly. Possibly. I think what you're hearing is, at a minimum, the Fairgrounds Road intersection and possibly other. But I think what you're also hearing is that the board is going to likely ask for an independent peer review of the traffic. And we will take that under strong advisement, what that independent peer review comes back. The independent peer review could come back and say, yeah, Fairgrounds is nice, but it's not necessary. He may agree with, you know, your consultant. He may also agree with the state and say, you know, these warrants or these numbers, by the numbers, doesn't, doesn't, yeah. But it may, pendulum may swing the other way. We don't know. We're going to, that's exactly why, on the town's behalf, I think it's prudent to ask for that specific peer review.
And we are getting concerns from the people that live out there and the townspeople. And that's, we're here to represent them. So, you know, I, I, I just feel like it's, it's a request from them, and we should fulfill that.
Protect the town's interests.
Correct.
And we understand that, I think, you know, we understand that there's city rules and the ordinance that we want to follow. We want to work with the town, and we, we want to play by the rules. And we understand the concern from the citizens, and we're happy to go through that. It's just, at a certain point in time, the rules are the rules, and we're trying to find them as best we can, and that's all we can do.
We got that, yeah.
Understood.
My other question for the board is, given the concerns we've heard and some of the conversations we already had, do we want more information or more extensive buffering in terms of vegetation and, I mean, we've heard a little bit about this already, and heard some reassurances about the south side, for example, that there's going to be fairly decent side vegetation there, but also for the abutters as well. I don't know if we, how we feel about that, because obviously there are concerns from some of the abutters. And I wonder if the buffering is sufficient, and I haven't even looked that closely into it yet, but how we feel about that.
I mean, I'm concerned about it.
Just so, if we are concerned about that, that we can get that information for our next meeting, and we don't leave that hanging.
Yeah, like, that house by the road is the corner of that house to the corner of this hotel is, you know, going to be less than ninety feet. It's very, so, you know, substantially close.
And it's not just a closed building, it's also like sightlines between rooms and house and lights coming out of the, even with the exterior lighting being downcast, just potential for other ambient lighting from rooms and such like that.
I mean, corner to corner, it's like, I'd say eighty-seven feet.
Have a conversation with the abutters as well before the planning board needs to do anything.
Okay.
That would be great.
I think that definitely needs to happen.
At least have a conversation.
Yeah, I think, I think two of the abutters that are affected mostly by that, that south elevation are, are here in the audience.
John.
If you're willing to work with them, that would be-
She had a question over here.
Well, just with regards to the traffic and people using Fairgrounds Road, do you think if they know there's a covered bridge, they might want to go see it?
There's that.
Head that way, I would guess?
Strongest bridge in the world, supposedly.
Yeah, that's right. That's what they say. That's a good, another good point.
Yeah, great.
It's not our town seal.
Yeah, no, I mean, it, it's definitely worth looking into some of that larger traffic, there's larger traffic patterns that you were mentioning, and Sue. So, yeah, if we can, like, get a conversation going with the abutters about buffering and get those engineering studies, and we already agreed to escrow, I guess, and want to turn this into an official motion or?
I'll move that we continue.
Second.
Second.
To the May sixteenth meeting, was that it?
The next meeting will be May sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
With those reviews and-
Yeah, with, with, with the discussion, with the, with the reviews and, and asking that the applicant work with town staff, set up escrows for review.
Thank you, yeah. So, we have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion to that?
Just to mention, there are, we do have the authority to collect impact fees, that if we don't use within such a length of time, that it would go back to the applicant. But it's-
In terms of offsite impact for, like, the intersection or whatever, if it gets to that stage.
Yes.
Which is why we're asking for the traffic studies, just to see if it comes to that. Yeah.
If that were a town, if that were a town-funded intersection, that would be one thing, but it's, it's all-state. I don't know that we can. No, it's, it's-
Well, we'll, we'll have that discussion when we get there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the state can pay for the, the state to that, so we can't do it. It'd be good, we should talk about it.
All right, so, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? All right. Thank you very much for your time and your patience. And see you in a month.
Don't forget we have to circle back to-
I know. I got, I got that, yeah.
Yeah, it's on your list, too.
It is.
Thank you.
I didn't forget. I did ask, you should be reminded, though. Because I thought I might.
Welcome. See what I mean? It's real.
I, I see your tractor out there. I know why it's there.
I see your tractor, too.
I know why it's there.
Keep doing it, it's smart. Yeah.
So, it's, it's, you're, you're in a tough spot. It's, it's good on, on some hands, but you're, people want to go through. And I'm sure people cut through the, the-
Don't leave yet.
All the time.
No, I won't.
Hello?
Sure. Does it have to be the chair? Can anybody?
Spread out.
Spread them out. We can all do that.
This one?
Actually, I don't have a pen.
Or this one?
Are you a pen?
Not officially adjourned yet, but you made it till, like, nine o'clock. You're good.
I don't want it.
Nine-thirty, in fact, yeah.
Thanks for just hanging in there for a long meeting.
No, no, no.
Thank you for coming.
Be sure to tell your civics teacher.
You lasted longer than my college students.
Best reason to do this is that you get a hundred percent raise every year.
Yeah.
Well, he knows way more than I know.
It's, it's, I'll tell you, it's not easy.
And I've been through wetland mitigation and everything.
It's just so hard.
Subs having to be, like, prime.
Okay.
Solicit, like-
Are you, are you sophomores?
Hi.
Should be a floodplain or a pool. They're not landscape lighting, maybe they should, you know, and they're definitely not.
Long night for them.
Sixth class, and they sit through the meetings.
But he's capable of-
Start about five.
Have to have somebody sign the paper saying that they were here. That's what they were saying.
Slow down at night.
Yeah.
All right. Room is looking kind of empty.
They're not here because they want to be.
However, that's, just, just, just to circle back, just in case, um, just to circle back, just in case, um, do we have anyone here from the Yeton Road Development online or, obviously not in person right now?
See him.
Um, no, there's no one online, right? I can't quite read it.
Two people on Zoom, but neither have unmuted or erased their hand, and neither are anyone I recognize.
Do you need a motion to continue?
Yeah, I suppose we should officially open a hearing and-
Continue, I guess. I don't, there's nobody here to hear. I'm just going to say, I'm going to make the bold motion to continue the hearing on the Yeton Road to the May sixteenth meeting.
You can't continue.
Okay, I'll just donate that out there.
Susan, go ahead. Let everyone know.
All right, so, a motion, a second, to continue to the sixteenth?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor? Aye. Just for the record, then, that is the end of their sixty-five days, and they can keep going if, on their approval to us to do that.
We can, we, they can ask for an extension, or we can rule on the information we have, which is not enough to approve.
Exactly.
And I'll reengage with Will. I, I haven't heard anything since that contact where he said that he was hoping to discuss updating the plans with the board and that he did not want to engage the engineered review before having that conversation. So, I'll reach back out to him.
I think I saw them out there looking for the sewer pipe.
Oh, is that it?
That could be.
Wait, so they're after what?
Try and go identify the sewer line.
Oh, okay.
Try to locate that before they make solid plans.
Got it. All right. Let's hope we have some informational and pre-application reviews. No. Right? Other business from members of the board and planning staff?
Well, I will defer my, very timely in some ways, but I would ask that we just hold off. I had some discussion, and I prepared it and sent it out for last meeting about the ten-year transportation, not the projects that are already in there, but looking forward to the new cycle that's starting up, so new opportunity for the town to get a project back on there and the project that we-
This is, this is for the state?
Yeah, this is for the state's plan.
I got one for you.
This is not time-sensitive to this meeting.
Correct.
So, we can do that at our, uh, work session next month.
It is feasible to move that up to a, a closer date. They, you know, they, what they do is they-
Are we talking, are we talking about Tenny, are we talking about Tenny Mountain and Fairgrounds? I mean, um-
Are we on something else?
Smithbridge.
Well, we're, we're talking about the next thing.
Also traffic-related, but not that.
The Smithbridge thing is on the list, but we're talking about the next thing for thirty years from now.
Hopefully not thirty.
Yes.
All right.
I do have one, though.
So, we'll cycle back to that at our work session. And members of the public, are there public comments?
Right. Thank you for your input.
My name's Frank Miller.
Hi, Frank.
I would like to suggest that this planning board get with the town manager and maybe even the select board, but look to see about a political connection, House, Representative, Senate. This, we, we keep waiting on our ten-year plan from the state, and we see the number seven or eighth or ninth. We need a political solution to this because we need to move it forward. We've done enough studies. I can tell you all about the direct, indirect, and induced things that are going on, you have not aware of, about Quincy Road and other road systems you have no control over as far as increase in numbers. And we need, we need action now, okay? And I think we need to connect with the people that represent us in Concord and indicate the seriousness of this situation. Obviously, it's not going to get any better if nothing's done, and we need to get the politics into it to get the, um-
We have one of those people on the select board.
I, I just emailed him in the middle of the meeting.
So, um-
I actually think Cindy Warmington is probably a good person to reach out to as well. She's our executive counselor, and she's probably going to be the most-
Official letter from this board to the select board, to the town manager, whatever, that says, hey, this is serious and we-
DOT will respond to pushes from-
Well, DOT can, is, folks in, and, the House there that tell all the departments what to do and when. So, we need that kind of movement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank.
Thanks, Frank.
All right.
Need a Ray Burton.
Yeah, well, Cindy Warmington is the closest thing we have. She's, she's our executive counselor.
Motion adjourned.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are, we are adjourned.
Glad to hear.
Have a great night. Thank you for sticking in there, everyone.
Thanks, John.[1674.12]